All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is 7:03 PM. Roll call, Patty, please.
Krenski.
Present.
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 No, no, you're not. You can only listen in. You are not here for the purposes of attending the meeting since you're on vacation. Sorry.
Listening in.
So, Deanna, what do I put then?
Absent.
Oh, absent, okay.
Yeah.
Mancia?
Present.
Petrielli's absent. Reed?
Present.
Petrielli's present, not absent. Did you say absent? Patty?
No. Oh, no, I'm present. You're right, I'm present, but I'm not there, so.
Okay.
And Schumacher?
Present.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Our first order of business is the presentation of the Success for Life Awards. So, tonight, the CCSD 59 Board of Education is very proud to announce our Success for Life Award. This award is a new way for our district to recognize and honor individuals making a significant contribution to the Community Consolidated School District 59 community through their time, actions, talents, and dedication. The honorary selected exhibit compassion, service, and strive to be a role model for others as they seek to make the world a better place.
And I'm going to read it in Espanol, también para la gente que habla el español. Esta noche, la Junta de Educación del Distrito 59 tiene el orgullo de anunciar nuestro premio Éxito para la Vida. Este premio es una nueva manera para que nuestro distrito reconozca a personas que hacen una contribución a la comunidad del Distrito 59 a través de su tiempo, acciones, talentos, y dedicación. Los honorados son, que son seleccionados, exhiben compasión, servicio, y buscan ser un modelo para otros en su meta hacer este mundo un mejor lugar.
The mission of CCSD 59 is preparing students to be successful for life, and the recipients of the CCSD 59 Success for Life Award embody the spirit of our mission as they are not only individually successful in their own lives, but they have found success by making a difference in the lives of others.
Y la misión del Distrito 59 es preparar a sus estudiantes para tener éxito en la vida, y los que reciben el premio representan el espíritu de nuestra misión, en que no solo son personas exitosas en sus propias vidas, pero ellos también han encontrado el éxito en hacer una diferencia en la vida de otros.
The 2021 recipients of the CCSD 59 Success for Life Award are Daniel Salgado Alvarez, an alumnus of CCSD 59, and Illinois Deputy Majority Leader Laura Murphy for their role in inspiring the Cards for Kids Act, which allows access to a free library card for low-income students living in unincorporated areas of Illinois not served by a municipal library.
Y las personas que reciben el premio este año son Daniel Salgado Alvarez, que fue un alumno del Distrito 59, y la senadora Laura Murphy de Illinois for her function in inspiring the Cards for Kids Act, la cual permite acceso libre a tarjetas para la biblioteca para estudiantes de bajos recursos que viven en áreas no incorporadas de Illinois, las cuales no reciben servicios de una biblioteca municipal.
Daniel graduated from Elk Grove High School this year, and he will be attending Harvard University on a full scholarship this fall. Daniel presented the Cards for Kids Act concept to Deputy Majority Leader Laura Murphy as a way to provide library services for students who were not previously eligible to receive a free library card.
Daniel Salgado de Elk Grove High School este año y estará estudiando en Harvard con una beca completa este otoño. Daniel presentó el concepto de la propuesta de Cards for Kids Act a la senadora Laura Murphy como una manera de dar tarjetas a la biblioteca para estudiantes que antes no eran elegibles.
Daniel, first of all, congratulations on your acceptance to Harvard, and thank you for being the catalyst for making access to libraries a reality for thousands of kids throughout the state of Illinois. I believe that education is the hallmark of democracy, and access to knowledge should be free and available to everyone. The Cards for Kids Act provides library access for about 1,200 District 59 students and another 400 Elk Grove High School students, and that's just in this little corner of the state. Your impact is immediate and significant.
Daniel, primero felicidades por haber sido aceptado a Harvard, y gracias por haber sido quien hizo el acceso a la biblioteca una realidad para miles de niños del estado de Illinois. Yo creo que la educación es una marca de la democracia, y el acceso al conocimiento debe ser gratis y estar disponible para todos. La ley Cards for Kids Act da acceso a la biblioteca para alrededor de 1,200 estudiantes del Distrito 59 y otros 400 de Elk Grove High School, y esto es solamente una pequeña parte del estado. Tu impacto es de mucha importancia.
Deputy Majority Leader Murphy, I have watched your career with interest and admiration. You have taken up many causes that help improve the lives of Illinoisans. This is just one of many examples of your strong leadership. Taking up the cause by sponsoring legislation to open up libraries to thousands of students all over Illinois who couldn't otherwise afford the fees is life-changing. The Cards for Kids Act was signed by the governor into law in late May of this year. Thank you so very much for your leadership and for making a profound difference in the lives of children.
Senadora Murphy, he's seguido tu carrera con interés. Usted ha tomado muchas causas para ayudar a mejorar la vida de los residentes de Illinois. Este es un ejemplo de un líder fuerte. Haber tomado la causa y patrocinar la ley para abrir las bibliotecas a miles de estudiantes en todo el estado de Illinois que de otra manera no habrían podido cubrir los costos cambia la vida. La ley Cards for Kids Act fue firmada por el gobernador este año. Muchas gracias por hacer una gran diferencia para las vidas de los niños.
I also want to acknowledge board member Mancia for his efforts and collaboration in establishing our Success for Life Award and helping to identify Daniel and Deputy Majority Leader Murphy as the first recipients of our award.
También quisiera reconocer al miembro de nuestra junta, Roberto Mancia, por ayudar establecer el premio Éxito para la Vida.
I want to congratulate both of you, Daniel and Deputy Majority Leader Murphy, and you will find a plaque honoring your efforts and your selection as the recipients of the 2020, 2021 Success for Life Award at your table. We'd like to invite you both to say a few words if you would like.
Yo quiero felicitar a ambos, Daniel y senadora Murphy, quienes reciben una placa honorando sus esfuerzos con el premio Éxito para la Vida. Los invitamos que digan unas palabras.
If you would open it up and show us, I haven't seen the final one. I would love to take a look at it before you can, you know, at the end we'll ask you to go outside. Thank you so much. I like those. Thank you so much. Okay, if you'd like to say a few words, that would be fine.
I'd first like to thank, you know, Senator Murphy for helping me out with this project. It's something that I have been interested in helping solve for, I'd say, over four years. It first started out with creating the summer camps at Oasis Mobile Home Parks for primarily middle schoolers and elementary school students so that they would have access to books, art activities, sports during the summer. And while I had loved doing that work, it really was just sort of a Band-Aid over a bullet hole. We didn't have access to a library. If we wanted to access other things within that library, we'd often be charged fees that some families couldn't afford. I remember growing up that, like, when I was in elementary school, I loved going to my school's library. And in the summer, when I didn't have access to that, I'd honestly be bored out of my mind. I was such a strong reader as a kid. I'd read three to four books a day sometimes because I just was so interested in it. And so, my whole purpose in fighting for the Cards for Kids Act was to allow kids to have, you know, year-long access to the library and all its resources, because it's not just books and the physical space, but it's also support, classes, and other activities within the library. And so, I'm really grateful that Senator Murphy helped us make this possible, because I know that many people have tried before me, and many people have tried before, and without her help and without the support of Elk Grove High School and all the various teachers within Elk Grove High School, I don't think it would have been possible. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. We're so glad.
Thank you.
You know, Daniel, my mother grew up in a very large family and very chronic conditions, and parents, the father that was kind of abusive to them, and the library was her refuge. And it meant the world to her, to have access to that, the world of information in a safe place. So, I've always been passionate about libraries, and I'm so glad that you got involved in this and were really instrumental in making it happen. So, thank you so much. Thank you. And first, I'm honored to be here with you all, and particularly in such great presence, Daniel, because what you're going to accomplish in your life.
Yeah.
It's going to just be insurmountable to the rest of us, and I know that you're going to do really great things. We've seen an example of it right now, and the future is just going to be unlimited for you. Because, well, first off, I want to start back to President Krasinski, Krenski.
Krenski.
Krenski was one of the first people that introduced me to the problem at the mobile home parks. And that was when we were trying to convert an old mobile home into library services, and we tried to work through Cook County and bureaucracy and all kinds of hurdles, and we were unsuccessful. Then, two years later, I have an opportunity to speak to students at Elk Grove High School, and Daniel was in the audience, and he said, "Wait a minute, this is what we really need if you want to help us." And that gave me the opportunity not only to really accomplish something that was a great cause, because my passion too is that if we can get kids to read and establish that love of learning and reading does that, they become the problem solvers of the future. And clearly, we have enough problems to solve, and to know that the next generation with those tools are going to be able to do that, and whatever we can do to contribute to that is our responsibility to do that. So, I was able to get my renewed passion from you and your classmates that helped with that and make it happen in this last General Assembly. And everyone, as soon as they were presented with the issue, everyone knew the need to make that happen, to make that happen, particularly in this pandemic environment where kids may or may not be learning remotely, they need the access to the library. So, I'm just humbled by the award. It's so not necessary, but I'm just doing my job and inspired by people like Daniel that really are going to make a huge difference. And those that come behind you because of the efforts that you've made, I'm really, really excited for what they're going to accomplish, what you're going to accomplish, and I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. But you know what? It's not just your job. I mean, there are plenty of people that sit, and maybe not the deputy majority leader, but in the Senate who don't do the kind of things that you do for your constituents and for the people in the state of Illinois. So, I absolutely refuse to let you downplay the significance of what you have done for our students and our families, to do what should have been done a long time ago, but I guess nobody just figured it out how to make it happen, because that's the equity. I mean, that's what we, all kids should have. And, you know, when we have free libraries, of course, taxes pay for them, but when we have free libraries, that is such an important foundation for any democracy, to have access to materials. And what you did, what the two of you did, just gives me chills. I am just so passionate and excited that you finally were able to get this thing done, and it's going to change the lives for kids forever.
Yeah. And if I can add on that, you know, Daniel, you got the world of opportunity ahead of you. You're just about to start the next chapter in your life. You can do whatever you want with that, and you've been a leader and a champion, and we thank you for that. But I also want to thank your mom, you know, because there's a lot you can learn in school, and there's a lot you can learn in a textbook, but compassion and respect and honesty, you probably learned at home. You know, so señora, también le quiero agradecer porque le digo, hay mucho que puede aprender en la escuela y en los libros, pero la honestidad, el respeto, la compasión, me imagino que lo aprendió en la casa. So, por eso le quiero decir gracias a usted también.
That's wonderful. And my father grew up in very modest circumstances as well, and his father abandoned the family, and he was raised by a mother who couldn't even afford to keep a roof over their heads, and they ended up homeless a lot. But his mother supported him and had that passion for education. The knowledge was, like, interesting and important, and so, parents really make a difference. I'm so, so proud of all of you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add on to what's been said, and Laura, it's very nice to see you again. We try so hard as a board, as a district, as teachers, to encourage our students to go above and beyond what they have to do in order to succeed, and that's what you've done. And I'm just sorry there aren't 100 students here to see this tonight, because it's not just what you learn in the classroom, it's the fact that you read two to three books a day. How many other students do that? Not many. And that's what we try to teach children, that hard work is not wasted, that it is of value to you the whole rest of your life. So, if you keep up with the hard work the whole way through, I can just imagine what is ahead for you as an adult. You certainly will succeed all along. So, good luck, and I'm very happy to meet you, and thank you for what you've done, but most of all, thank you for being a good example of what all our students should be doing. So, thanks.
And I can't wait to read about you in the future and where you go in your life.
Dan, one more quick comment. Eight years ago, when I started as superintendent, I was actually at a character counts coalition meeting, and they were discussing this problem and issue and trying to address it then. And it occurred to me, as this has now been resolved, I think it really was the combination of our students and our legislators actually coming together, because there was no student voice before, and I think that was truly the catalyst that made this happen. So, thank you for doing that and for your efforts and for supporting our community and all the students.
So, I want to ask, what are you going to study here, Daniel?
I'm thinking of studying government and then a minor in stats or data science.
Excellent. Because I also want to kind of echo what everybody says, because I know Mrs. McAfee over there and I, when I was, when she was principal and I was on the PTO, we were taught, we had talked about this. And I kind of say, I'm amazed that you were able, what you did, that us parents couldn't figure, adults couldn't figure out. You were able to come up with a solution and figure out how to do it, and I'm totally, truly impressed. And I also want to wish you good luck for your next four years. It's going to be stressful, but I hope it's going to be an amazing experience for you. And also, agree with Robert, thank you for, thank you, your mother. I truly, it's amazing. Thank you.
Thanks.
What a team you make. Maybe you'll go into politics, you'll come back, and you can, right? There you go.
Vice versa.
You can tutor him, Laura.
Yep, absolutely. All right, well, that concludes this piece. We'd like it if you could step outside where we can take a socially distant photograph of the two of you without your masks on.
Yes.
And so that we'll have a record of it. So, thank you very much.
We're going to have a plaque put up, like, somewhere in the building too, right, to track all these winners and all these...
I know we're talking about something. I don't know what we've agreed to, but I know that Ben has been in conversation, but I'm not sure what that will look like.
Yeah, so we'll have a plaque that'll have the year and the names of the winners or the honorees.
Yeah.
So, that'll be great. All right, so if you'll go outside.
Thank you for coming.
Picture. Thank you so much again.
All right.
Take care, Laura. Laura Walters, Laura Walters says hi, by the way.
Good luck to you all.
This is the least crowd we've ever had, so you're very special today.
Sure, I modified it just a little, but it's mostly what I said. Okay, well, it's all downhill from here, because there's nothing better than those kind of awards, but we actually have some important comments from community members, which of course matter to us. And so, I am going to try to see if I can remember, yes, I'm going to read them in the order in which they were received. The first public comment came from Amy Tautcher. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
You have any time, this, Marlon or Janice?
Everybody only has three minutes, so I'm going to try to read it and make sure it gets done in three minutes. So, if you'll give me a 30-second warning?
Yeah, where can I mat?
Okay. Let me know when you're ready.
All right, go ahead.
All right. "Thank you for allowing public comment at today's BOE meeting. I'd like to address the following concerns, mostly related to in-person learning scheduled to occur after September 8, 2020. Will all students and staff members be asked to isolate for 10 to 14 days when he or she has been in contact with a COVID-positive person or a person suspected of having COVID-19? I'm assuming that would entail isolating an entire classroom or several of students and multiple staff members? Will the siblings of each of those who are being isolated be notified in those classrooms or school? The siblings of 10 will also be notified, and students of staff isolated? If siblings in their classrooms and teachers are not isolated immediately, there is more at risk for the, more risk for the virus to be spread? How many negative tests, if any, are necessary for students and staff to return? All of this brings me to the topic of contact tracing. Who will be keeping track of which students can be in the building, on what days of isolation students are on, and making all these necessary phone calls to students' families? Will the Cook County Health Department be part of the contact tracing? Because, and I think you would agree, staff have enough responsibilities put on them and are not properly trained to do contact tracing. Busing? Will buses be wiped down and disinfected before and after each run? This would need to be a necessity. Have teachers, school staff, and families of staff been taken into consideration? I can make the correct assumption that teachers who are high-risk do work in the district, or staff have family members who are at high risk? Are staff being asked to figure out their situation on their own or find employment elsewhere? Staff have been asked to do many things since March, and rose to the occasion, I'm sure they will again, hopefully without risking their own and other family members' safety. It is stated that COVID-19 data will be reviewed on September 8, 2020. What data are you referring to? What percentage of positive cases have to decrease for in-person learning to begin or increase to continue with all remote learning? What data did the district use in determining that the district will begin with all remote learning? I want to be sure I'm also understanding what data is being used, because positivity rates are higher now than in March, and returning to in-person learning in September is being seriously considered. While starting with remote learning may not be the most popular option of many working parents, I applaud the decision to at least start that way. However, why was the decision only made since September 8, 2020? Not sure about any of you, but my work schedule does not come in increments of several weeks. I'm sure it is the same for so many households with working parents. I also do not view the school as responsible for finding childcare for my children. While I strongly believe schools are not daycares, and I would never use them as such, I have solidified childcare, but they do not function on maybe I'll need you in a few weeks, maybe not, I'm not sure, et cetera. Working parents and childcare options require a solidified decision for a longer amount of time. I ask that you consider extending the all-remote learning through the first quarter for all students so we can stop living life a few weeks at a time. Life, and especially in COVID-19 times, is inconsistent enough. I know there will be many unknowns, but myself and other parents do not want our children and families to be consequences of these unknowns. My children want to go back to school, they want to see their teachers, friends, and have the whole school experience. I explain to them that it will be much different should they return, as there won't be socializing, there won't be consoling hugs, they will need to face forward and get direct instruction, which we all know is the worst type of instruction, instead of group and partner work. They will need to wear a face covering for majority of the day, and the potential to be teased if they are isolated for possible COVID-19 symptoms. I understand that SEL lessons will focus on this type of behavior, but I work and live with middle schoolers. It's not always effective. They want to return because they want to return to normal, and as adults, we know that normalcy is a long time away. Also, the remote academy, when in-person learning is an option, it's not going, being done the same way remote learning from the beginning of the school year is being done. I want my children to have connections with their teachers as much as possible in a virtual manner, and I don't want to be the one to take that away so they can log into a virtual classroom of new teachers and students only to return to all-remote learning, as it is inevitable. It is in-person learning, if in-person learning does happen, whether it be all-in-person or hybrid, what are the behavior guidelines for students who do not follow the expectations of face coverings, stopping in the hallways to gather, et cetera? Will it be progressive discipline model? I would think parents would have some input in this matter before we are asked to sign some type of agreement. Thank you. Okay, the next one is from Connie Straub. Dear School District Board 59, I just have one question, hopefully it could be answered this evening. Will the teachers be doing their learning from a school District 59 building? Since we will be doing remote until further notice, I feel along with other parents that the teachers should be present in their classroom environment to teach our children. I do not think that our teachers should be staying home while we are doing the e-learning. They should get up, get to the school, they should get up and get to the school building just like it's a workday. I know that many of the teachers are like myself, they have children as well to take care of, they need to figure that out, just like myself. I have to figure out who's going to take care of my son when I get up every day and go into my work. They should be safe, because I know that the custodial and maintenance crews are doing their best to make the school safe and clean for them. Thank you very much, and hopefully the board and Dr. Fressel will agree that they should be in the buildings while doing e-learning, no more staying home. Have a great day, Connie Straub. Okay. The last one comes from a petition of teachers that signed it. There's quite a few names on this. It was forwarded to the board members. This is a petition that they did themselves. It is not a DEA petition, as I've been given to understand, but it's still obviously important because this many teachers signed it. We appreciate the district creating a plan for remote learning that will keep everyone safe and mitigate the spread of COVID-19. We understand this change presents leadership with additional challenges. Over the past 24 hours, we have collected 270 signatures from staff regarding the points outlined below. Requiring staff to be in school buildings while students are learning remotely is an unnecessary risk to staff health and lives. Staff have not yet been fully informed about necessary PPE and safety protocols. Building HVAC and ventilation systems may be inadequate. Many staff work in areas without proper ventilation and lack alternate spaces. In Arizona, a building with only staff had 11% test positive for the virus with one dying. There's some links in this document. I forwarded it to the board, so you can look at the article about Arizona and so on. Some staff have jobs that need to be completed in person. The best way to keep them safe is to minimize unnecessary sharing of space. Staff will have to wear a mask in the building while social distancing as per ISBE's guidance. Children will no longer be able to read facial expressions, rendering instruction less effective. The governor's office has updated guidelines encouraging continued work from home. The majority of staff worked incredibly hard in the spring and will continue to do so. Staff not fulfilling their requirements can be addressed by their supervisors. We urge the district to extend remote learning until the end of the first grading period. Based on current trends, it is unlikely that rates will be reduced to render schools safe by September. Many districts have decided to switch to full remote through the first term. Students switching between remote and in-person learning, adapting to PPE, learning how to interact while social distancing, and not being close to your teacher or classmates is stress-inducing. If our district commits to remote learning with a natural transition, parents and staff will be able to better plan for childcare, and students will have greater consistency. We propose the following ideas. One, extend remote learning and instruction until the end of the first grading period. Two, allow all staff who are able to work remotely during the school closure last spring to do so. Three, provide staff with specific guidance on requirements during remote learning. Those who do not meet expectations should get additional supervision. The specific was stressed in italics. Four, prior to returning to work in person, provide an explicitly, also italicized, detailed outline of procedures related to staff safety. Create a handbook of commonly asked questions for parents with regard to remote learning. Six, consider alternatives to typical roles for staff who are not required to provide regular contact with students or support to teachers. Seven, partner with school service providers and community agencies to supervise childcare for essential workers. We are confident that you will consider our concerns and... We are confident that you will consider our concerns and ideas with the attention and focus they deserve. With respect, gratitude, and hopefulness. It's signed by those 270 teachers and they're from all different schools it appears and everything from the early learning center through the junior high. So you can take a look at that. That is all I've received. Has anybody come to speak before the board? You're the only one here, so I gather not, okay.
That's John Dianza.
What?
John Dianza.
Oh, hi, John, I didn't recognize you. But you could have come to speak before the board. Okay, so now we are going to open the public hearing for the e-learning plan. Would somebody please make a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
All right.
You have to, you have to read it, I move.
Who's making the motion?
Randias, someone's got to be seconded first.
Mancia will second it.
Okay, so the motion was made by me, seconded by Robert Mancia, that Community Consolidated School District 59 Board of Education meeting be opened on the date, August 3rd, 2020, for a public hearing on the e-learning plan for the 2021 school year. And the secretary shall hold the record time as 6:00 or 7:33?
Yeah, PM.
PM.
Well, does anybody come to speak before the board? All right, so I guess we don't have anybody here, so we need to make a motion to close the hearing.
I move that we.
Do we have to do a roll call?
Oh yeah, sorry, we didn't do it, did we? Okay, roll call please, Patty.
Uh, Charlie Wood?
Aye.
Chris, I know I'm screwing it up again. Chris?
Aye.
Um, Courtney?
She's not.
I think I need to abstain.
She's absent, she doesn't even abstain, she's just absent.
Just absent, thanks, Jenna.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Mancia?
Aye.
Petrielli, absent?
You're not absent, you're present.
Oh, I'm present, okay, that's what I don't understand, okay.
No, you're not on vacation, so you can fully participate.
Gotcha, okay, now I get it, okay. Reed?
Present.
No.
Aye. I'm aye, geez.
Schumacher?
Aye on the motion.
And Krenski?
Aye.
Gotcha.
And?
Uh, oh, and motion passed, ooh, man, I'm falling down on my job.
We all have, we seem to not remember how to do this very well, but we'll, we'll get the hang of it and then we'll go back into virtual, so. Anyway, okay, so there's nobody here to speak, so we can go ahead and make the motion to close the hearing.
I move that we close the hearing.
And that's Mardell.
Yes.
Gotcha.
And record the, and record the time at 7:35.
7:35, got you, who's seconding?
Chris Gattalavichol, seconded.
Chris, okay. Um, and roll call, Lane?
She's absent.
Absent, okay, Mancia?
Uh, aye.
Petrielli, aye, Reed?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Krenski?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Um, Courtney?
Absent.
Absent, that's right, sorry, sorry, sorry. Uh, and I have it.
Okay, does that mean the motion passed?
Yes, the motion passed.
Sorry, I don't know if you have to say it, those words are not. Thank you very much, okay, and now we're up to 6.0, discussion of the reentry plan.
All right, good evening, everyone, we'd like to provide an update of what's happened over the last seven to 10 days. First, I'd like to start off basically just reviewing some of the things that have been in place and then some of the upcoming pieces that we'll be working on. So last Monday, as you all know, we shared what a recommendation would be for the Board of Education in terms of having a remote start and then also looking at reentry points, dates, and things of that nature. So with that information, on Tuesday, July 28th, we hosted town hall virtual presentations for both staff and for parents. We did collect some questions prior to that and we, you know, in each group we had 300 to 400 questions. We tried to theme those questions and respond to those as well as possible.
Do you want us to hold questions until the end?
Yes.
Okay.
Not all of the responses made sense, so I received probably 30 emails total from parents just asking some follow-up questions. I've had the opportunity to talk to a number of those and have conversations to build some understanding. I still have several other phone calls to make, so those watching, I will be returning your phone call or scheduling a time to chat with you, but those have been very helpful. It's also been helpful for me to hear the parent questions and feedback because some of the questions we thought we actually responded to, but didn't respond too well, so that, that was quite useful. On the 29th, we asked our, our parents to register for one of two options and the primary reason for that was to determine what type of instruction program we could, in-person instructional program, we could eventually run. So our goal is to have class sizes less than 15 when our students return so that we can socially distance in a manner that is safe, so that's our goal. If we can't do that with the five-day in-person, then we will pivot to a hybrid model that would be two days in-person, three days remote. I do want to make it clear that no matter what we do, it's going to be a hybrid because it's very different than regular school. It's just the type of hybrid model that, that we roll out. So that brings us today, to today, August 3rd for the public hearing for the final budget and then an update. Next week, though, we would like to dial into, we'd like to get some feedback from you guys tonight. We'd like to dial into what we're, what we're absolutely going to ask the board to pass for next Monday. So again, these are recommendations we've made to the board. We've tried to share them with the public to get some reactions and responses, which we have, as have you. I think many of the emails that I received were also copied to most of the board members. I will say that I've gotten very positive female, or feedback emails about the remote start and then I've got probably twice as many emails from families saying they want in-person instruction. So just to give you an idea of the flavor of the feedback. And then Monday, August 17th, we're suggesting that will be the, the first day of, of remote learning. Backing up, the 10th through the 14th, we're going to go to some more intensive staff training. We will provide that virtually. That does not mean that staff won't be on-site, but we will, we will not bring staff together in, in large numbers. They may do some remote or in their classroom types of training. So we will provide digital training either on or off-site or a combination during that week. And then lastly, Tuesday, September, September 8th, you know, interestingly, we, we identified a four-week period to start the remote. I sincerely believe, based on the current data, that it could be longer than that period. It wouldn't surprise me if it was the entire first semester based on, you know, the positivity rates increasing. And then one other piece of data that we look at is availability to hospital beds. And there are a few other, other factors that we'll touch on today. But, you know, just to be clear with parents, just because we're saying that we're reevaluating in September 8th, I would be preparing for the long-term, not the short-term. It just doesn't look like the current indicators are stating that it's going to be safe for a return. On the other hand, we would like to, every three or four weeks, reevaluate the needs of our families, the needs of our, of our students and see if we can bring back small groups of kids. So even if we can't, open it up to all of our students, we have kids with special needs, we have kids with higher level of needs and services, we have kids who, or families who may have some daycare types of, of conflicts that we may be able to help out with. So we do think that the first three or four weeks will be a great learning time for us to, to really more deeply understand the needs of our community and our students and make decisions. So even if we're in remote for four weeks or six week, or eight weeks, I do anticipate having some very small groups of kids in the school as, as a scenario where we're meeting the needs of our most needy kids and families. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in our update, but just wanted to give you a quick introduction. So again, we, we remain in phase four, you have seen this slide every presentation. July 23rd was the latest update from the State Board of Education and Department of Health. And again, the, two of the primary pieces here is the five-hour instructional day definition. That doesn't mean that we can't go six or seven hours if we so choose or atypical, but the, the definition of an attendance day is at least five clock hours. Now, they have given us flexibility with those five clock hours to have virtual, the synchronous, the asynchronous assignments, but they are suggesting that, that school districts do 2.5 to three hours of in-person contact or direct instruction. So we did share a schedule with the community in our town hall of what that might look like. And then the other piece is that all districts are required to have a remote learning program, academy, or service for any parents who request. These are the return-to-school priorities which have maintained the same. We want our kids and staff back in, in school as quickly as possible, but only when we believe that it's safe. And I think that's an important piece, so. Again, that September 8th deadline was kind of confusing in that we're not saying that that's the day we're bringing kids back or determining. That's the day we're, that we're going to look at the data and say, is it possible? And if not, we will continue. But we also may say that, okay, there are some smaller groups of kids that really need their services and we may want to start developing ideas and strategies to bring those groups of students back in for services. So again, you have seen this slide several times and it was part of the town hall presentation as well. Our two options remain the same. Option one, in-person. Again, our goal is five-day instruction, but class sizes of 15 or fewer students. If after we run registration and we cannot meet that number, then we will pivot to a hybrid, which will cut that number in half because kids will be only coming two days a week and maybe three. We would need to talk, I would need to talk more about that with the board to see what type of model the board would support. But maximum two to three days a week of direct instruction and then the remaining two or three days in a remote type of instruction. So again, that, that was the key for the registration. I, I received a lot of parent, not a lot, but five or six emails from parents saying, you know, we don't know if it's going to be remote or hybrid, therefore we can't schedule. Well, I'd like parents just to pick, if they want their kids in-person, to choose the in-person or, or choose the remote if not, because again, depending on how many people register, that's actually what determines which model we will run. I do believe, another good question parents asked was, can we choose to change our mind? I think it's more easy to change from in-person to remote because we can facilitate more kids and remote learning than to go the other direction because then that starts to impact the class sizes. But we'll need to talk more about that. But in whatever we do, we will certainly be sensitive to the needs of our parents and students and families as we address those situations. And then the other option is the remote academy. And I want to stress again, the remote academy will look significantly different than it did in the spring. In the spring, the State Board of Education and our governor was very clear that we only could do certain things in education and one of the keys was we could not provide new instruction. It only could be building on prior learned practices. We could not grade. So I know that, that there's been some negative feedback about that piece, but that was out of the control of the school district and the teachers. So, you know, on behalf of our teachers, I know that they worked very hard and they wanted to do more with their kids and students, but again, we had parameters that we were instructed to follow by the State Board of Education as well as the governor's office. In the, in the fall, when we, when we began, it will be very, very different. So we will be returning to grading practices, we will be returning to new instruction opportunities. We've purchased, and I know Maureen will go into this a little more, but significant number of more student-directed type of software platforms that will allow them to work independently, that are mastery-based and will allow them to identify what's their current level of skill. And then it's, most of them have an acceleration model that they can work through and practice through and help close the gaps. They have diagnostic tools that our staff can see, so it really will help us to identify the learning loss and then develop plans for every kid to address those learning losses. And it will also allow us to work with parents to say that, please have your child work 25 or 30 minutes extra each night to help address these gaps. So that will be a great resource for our, our staff, our teachers, and our administrators as we can look at data and they can do this at home, which is the great piece about that. Maureen, does that sound pretty accurate?
Correct.
I don't want to steal too much of Maureen's content, but again, just trying to place things in perspective. So what has changed? We are now suggesting that we start remotely and then we revisit our remote plan on a regular basis. Now, if the board would like to, you know, redirect the administration and say, you know, four weeks is too soon, we want to do it six weeks, or we want to do it in eight-week increments, we're open to that feedback. But as you know, we were one of the first districts to say that we're going to go remote. In the aftermath, most other surrounding school districts have said, yes, we're going to go remote now and most of them are going for, for an entire first quarter. I think our strategy was to say, hey, let's look at this closely every four weeks or so and see what kids we can bring back. So that was the intent. It wasn't not necessarily the intent to say, in four weeks, we're going to go in-person automatically. So if it's not safe, I think we would all agree that we don't want our kids or our teachers back in our schools. So that's the new, that was the new recommendation. Again, the other options have remained the same. So just quickly, for the, for the sake of any viewers watching this board meeting, I have asked Maureen to talk about what return to instruction would look like. You guys have seen these, but again, this would be consistent with both plans, whether it's remote or in-person. And then following that, our plan teams will just kind of walk through new information. So not, not anything that's repetitive, but new information. We'll talk a little bit about the registration process and then we can have a discussion. So with that, Maureen?
Okay, thank you. So this slide is not new information, but just to reiterate a few important points. I think as Dr. Fessler said, the items you see on our instructional plans are really, they are, you will see those whether we are in remote or we are in-person. So I just wanted to make that a mention. So our remote learning will be very different, very robust, rigorous. Like our in-person instruction, we will have similar lesson structures. We will have identified essential learning targets. We'll be focusing on really addressing that learning loss and have those opportunities whether we are in remote or in-person. We will have that five-hour minimum instructional day. I will tell you that after planning the past few days for what the remote day will look like, because we are not going to have to do the time it takes to enter, dismiss, wash hands, take mask breaks, we really will exceed that five hours of instructional time. By far, it would really be almost the same instructional day when we are in remote, so we're very happy about that. We were able to make sure that we have time for our staff for their collaboration and planning and also really have solid blocks of time for our student instruction. Again, whether we're remote or in-person. So our schedules really do go over both modes with some tweaks. When we are remote, there are certain ways you do things that are slightly different than when you are in-person. Some things take a little longer in remote, getting everybody logged in, making sure they're present. Some things are shorter when you're in remote. We don't have to get up and the whole class go to the bathroom to wash our hands. So there are pros and cons to both, but they will both look very similar and very different than the spring. So let me just focus on a couple of updates in the instruction area. So based on feedback we are getting from families and from our, our school leaders, we are now looking to schedule students with teachers from their home school at the start of the year, much like we typically do. This is a change. We've heard from parents that it is important to them that students start with teachers from their own school and the fact that really, we, we hope in four weeks we can come back, but that may not be possible. So we, and the fact that students are all starting remotely put a little twist into when we first envisioned that remote academy. We're exploring that option right now, we're going to be talking to our leaders again tomorrow. What we would do in that case is assign students to their classes like we normally would. We would hold on the assignment to the remote academy until that time comes when return to in-person instruction is starting and then we will approach that for families who request remote. We will see what the conditions are. Hopefully, we'll see some really improving conditions and at that time. Hopefully, we'll see some really improving conditions and at that time.
Just to just to clarify, the reason that's important is because in our Friday communication, we explained that families who selected the remote option could be in a cohort, so they could have teachers from across the district. So, we received a number of phone calls saying, we want our kids with our teachers from our school. We know them, we have relationships with them. Our school leaders felt the same way, so that's why we pivoted, but we wanted to make clear that that would be a change from a communication.
And we were, you know, we were committed to providing the same services in the remote academy as students receive in other classes, but that was going to look somewhat different based on our staffing. So, this way, we can maintain our classes, we can maintain our instructional approach as we all start remotely. So, that is, so that's kind of a, that's a new piece of information. As I mentioned also, we are working on those remote schedules and are finding that are pleased to see that we are able to exceed that five hours of instructional time. Of course, that will be a minimum, at least, half synchronous or live instruction, and then half asynchronous. So, we're very confident, our committee met again on Friday, and to look at what that schedule will look like. So, we'll also be sharing that with leaders tomorrow. So, we were happy with that. Students in elementary, we're still able to give them their specials time. That means we can maintain those teacher plan times, so that is working out very well. And now, we will have students with a teacher from their homeschool. Regarding resources, I wanted to just share, you know about a couple of resources because you voted on them, STEM Scopes and iReady. I will just remind you that the board, that iReady is also going to be available at junior high this year as a pilot. That was a new piece of information. We felt that having that resource, especially for math, across the elementary and junior high would be a good for this year especially. The junior high teachers will be asked for their input and evaluation about continued use of iReady. We are also going to be using a program called iStation for reading at the K-5 level. iStation is a product similar to iReady in that there is a diagnostic, a pretty comprehensive diagnostic assessment to start the year. This populates a customized learning path for students, much like iReady, where they're going on to their learning path, they're able to do activities at their level, work on skills they need to master. It'll be very helpful for remote learning. And also, teacher can directly assign lessons as well. So, if a teacher sees this specific essential learning target and wants to assign lessons just about that, even as a formative assessment point, that the teacher can do that as well with iStation.
So, Maureen, are you suggesting that with the with the platforms, if a fifth-grade kid's performing at grade 4.5, and we want to get them to sixth grade by the end of the school year, this this will, using its intelligence, artificial intelligence, plot a path that will close that gap, tell them, here's how much time you have to practice, or here's your progress, and then our teachers also get that information through reports, et cetera?
Correct. So, for each of the domains of literacy, it gives a report, a detailed report, a grouping report. You know, I, the, this ensures us that the independent practice students are doing is at their level, is meaningful, isn't too hard, too easy. They are doing activities that challenge them. And the teacher has that constant stream of data on how they are doing, so that the teacher would know as well. With iStation, students take, retake the entry assessment each month, so that progress can be monitored in that way as well. This is a resource too that is available in English and Spanish, so it does mirror our biliteracy approach. They actually are the only company we've seen that produces a biliteracy report that allows us to look side-by-side at that data. Where are they strong in English? Where are they strong in Spanish? To really help with that instructional planning. That, I will tell you, we are doing that as a pilot. We wanted to really, so we, prior to investing resources, we wanted to just, we worked, used it in summer school, had some good results, a few glitches that concerned us about overcommitting right now. The company has assured us that those glitches we experienced were unique to our summer pilot, but we want to just make sure that they can deliver what.
So, full district pilot though, so every every kid will be using it this year?
Correct.
But we are not committing to a long-term commitment? We want to use it for a year, give some feedback, and then make a decision?
Correct. I think it's actually through December, and then we will decide. They're offering it to us for free of charge until December when we can make a decision. It is a commonly-used program in districts with large dual-language populations primarily.
For the reading component, not the math.
For the read.
Okay.
For the read, yep.
Sorry, I didn't want to.
And then, the other, several other resources, and again, we're going to kind of scaffold this. We don't want staff to come back next week, and here's new program, one, two, three, four. You know, we've already launched the iReady. We've had probably 300 teachers already participate in that training this summer. We're going to let them get going on that, and then we'll take a look at, after several weeks, now some training on the iStation. A couple of other programs that teachers use in the spring for remote learning that were, they recommended when we surveyed them, that we have secured. Also, our one called La Lilo. It is a, an English phonics digital resource, so similar to the other resources. You take a diagnostic assessment, it identifies gaps, what you need to work on, creates a customized path. We were afraid that last year, even our third graders missed, could have missed out on a lot of the phonics program that we had. Maybe those lessons were different, and we want to make sure that we have ways for them to really boost those phonics skills. And to be honest, it was cheaper to purchase for all of K-3 than just for third grade alone due to the discounts, the volume discounts. So, our K-1, 2 teachers will also have access to that. Again, we will scaffold that. We don't want to, you know, teachers next week to be doing nothing but learning new tools, that would be somewhat overwhelming.
Yeah, right.
So, we will kind of space that out. And then, some resources for teachers for their own planning. A lot of companies that we already work with are now producing video libraries of recorded mini lessons. So, this will be great for, they have them for reading, writing, phonics, and that we can, staff can use if they want to to share with, with lessons with students. They can either do live, or maybe today, they might say, I'm going to use this lesson that is recorded. Last spring, our teachers were awesome about sharing things. For example, one teacher might have prepared Hegarty phonemic awareness videos and shared them with the rest of the staff. You know, I think we want to help our teachers work smarter at that, and if somebody has really mastered something, it's kind of like everybody will have a master teacher then. If I've really mastered those Hegarty phonics, phonemic awareness lessons, why not share and have all students benefit from that? We won't be doing that in all areas, but we want to open that door. This is hard work, especially when you're remote and you spend a lot of time by yourself as a teacher, so trying to really encourage that collaboration in our resources. And also, you know, I would, we feel like that will be good professional development for teachers to see, okay, here's the lesson from the experts, from the company, here's what a phonics lesson looks like. They will also learn as a result of using that. They don't have to use those, but they're there, especially for students who maybe aren't able to attend today a live lesson, they can view a recorded lesson. So, those are a few of our new resources to support remote learning. And then, along with that professional learning, next week, we are excited to welcome back our staff to work. We are organizing the professional activities, making sure that we have the contractual time for staff to plan, and as well as training on safety. And we are putting together some modules related to just overall high-quality remote instruction. What does that look like? How can we best teach remotely? So, it won't just be about the tools, it will be about the pedagogy of remote instruction. We, you probably saw in my email last week, the opportunity for staff to participate in a blended learning class. I am proud to say that so far, 270 of our teachers have signed up to take advantage of that opportunity. So, our teachers are ready to dig in. They want to be the best remote instructors they can, and I think that was a great testament to their eagerness to get started and really learn. So, we were very excited about that.
All right, thank you, Maureen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have some updates for the updates for the operations committee, and I will also share the piece about health and safety. The first is in regards to staffing assignments, and as both Dr. Fessler and Maureen have shared, we have evolved in our thinking in terms of how we will start the year in terms of assigning students, and so, of course, that impacts our staffing. We did proactively reach out to our staff over a week ago to gather information to find out, due to the pandemic, what level of ADA accommodations we'll need to provide and things of that nature. The staff, it was an optional survey, they were phenomenal, we had 600 responses, and it looks, from an initial glance, it just closed, and we've been crunching numbers all weekend, the strong majority of staff are going to be able to report to work. We will be able to, over the next week or so, collect in more detail with certain individuals what accommodations they might need. Accommodations can look many different ways, and with students starting remotely, it can look like an accommodation of someone that is in their classroom working by themselves. Sometimes, it does need to be someone working remotely. So, we'll work with that percentage, which is falling in the typical range. We are also, the second bullet, we made it very clear that we are planning to start at work at school beginning next Monday for our professional development. That might look a little different onsite. We might not, or not might not, we won't have 50 people in an LRC for a meeting, but we will be onsite. Teachers will have access to their resources and everything that they need to to teach and to learn as we're getting ready for the school year to start the week after. Again, we will be using some time to make sure we're appropriately accommodating and adjusting for the needs that are coming in. They aren't typically coming in in this level, but we seem to be in in good shape. As Dr. Fessler shared, we are also sharing the message that when looking at the numbers, the time is now to be making childcare arrangements if people have not started to as of today. I know two districts, I believe just this evening, also announced that they will be starting remotely, and that has created some more anxiety from individuals who thought they had childcare, who now do not. So, if you still have a school district that is claiming to come back, you still should be planning for childcare. Things are changing by the moment. We're also looking further into the future for when we do start returning in that hybrid piece, if not sooner, with our partners to be able to potentially provide some childcare support or options for our families. That is in the infancy, but that is the vision. Ron O'Connor, our CSBO, has done a tremendous job of connecting with our current partners in the Elk Grove Park District and our other villages, and they are very eager to work with us. Right now, it does look like what they need, we have, and what we need, they have. But we do have a lot more work to do, but that is our goal. If we can reach that goal, of course, we would have to gather some more information to determine how that would roll out, and if there's limited capacity, how we can find those with the greatest need to be able to fairly try to provide that support. But it does align with our value in terms of trying to help our staff and help our our families as we go through this very unprecedented time. The Health and Safety Committee, which is run by Dr. Ossol, one of their newest updates is something that the Operations Committee has been working on for the last few weeks at the Ad Center, and that's why I'm reporting that out to you, and that is about staff self-certification. So, much of, many of you have probably gone through a process like that, you may have tonight, where people are asked to take their temperature and to reflect on how they're feeling over the past 14 days. We believe we're going to be able to expand one of our current software products, Skyward, to have a built-in app. Parents are familiar with Skyward Family Access, staff is familiar with that. That app is not quite ready, that's okay. We have developed our own Google Form, which is, it's good, it gets the job done, but we've learned a few things over the last couple of weeks at the Ad Center. That staff has been tremendous. They're here, they're working, and they are getting this reminder every night, and they are checking that survey in the evening, and again, in the morning before they come to work, they check off their information, and it reminds them and flags if they need to contact their supervisor for questions. And again, that doesn't always equate to someone not coming into work. Sometimes, that equates to another temperature check at work. Sometimes, it does equate to an accommodation, like working from home, and sometimes it it can turn into other things. But it really is everybody's part of making sure we're checking on a daily basis that when people come into the building, we can feel safe and comfortable. We will be starting that at the school level next week on Monday, and that is something we will work with our principals and assistant principals with tomorrow, and we'll use the same kind of Google Form until that app is developed.
Sounds good.
All right, I'm going to talk from back here, so I'll leave that table open for Tom. He's going to speak to a next slide. So, a quick communication update, so student schedules in Skyward. As we spoke about earlier this evening, the enrollment process is really important for selecting in-person or remote, because that depends on how we structure schedules and programming and those pieces. So, this week, we're going to work on updating those schedules, and then we're going to post those assignments and those schedules in Skyward and direct parents to log in. In the past, we have mailed those letters, and for efficiency this year, we're going to work to try to support parents to find that information in Skyward. A lot of our schools right now are contacting parents and families and connecting them and making sure they can log into Skyward, which has actually been a really nice support as they're working to get those enrollment selections done for that process. So, it's worked out to be a nice benefit that we're getting more people to to check in and and know their login credentials and those pieces through that Skyward process. We will be working on return-to-school communications from the building level, so building sharing what that first week will look like for students. We know we have a lot of relationship building, we have a lot of support for new students, support for kindergarten. We want to share in the very near future from the building level what that will look like and what families can expect during that first week. We're also working to build out an FAQ on our website. So, some of these elements of the plan have obviously been evolving, and we want to make sure parents are updated, families and staff are updated about what those plans are and what those pieces are reflected in those changes. So, any frequently asked questions that we're starting to receive, we're collecting as a leadership team, and then we're working to build out those responses, and we'll have those posted in the near future. And the last piece that was on, the last bullet was about the enrollment process, so I'll turn it over to Tom to speak to the spreadsheet that you see.
We can just go to the next slide?
Okay.
The presentation.
So, we are daily, actually multiple, multiple times each day, checking the registration process. So, I did run a report a couple hours ago, just to see where we were at in regards to parent selection of either in-person or the remote academy. We've been collecting that by school, actually, some of the more detailed pieces, get it down to the grade level, to really understand where we're at with that process. So, actually, today, from 9:30 this morning till 5:30 tonight, we had about a 10% increase in our response. So, this does give us, and we're about 50% now, 51.5%, so it does give us an indication of where schools are at. You could see a high at Claremont of 78.3% of families are saying that have responded so far, are saying they want in-person instruction, whereas 21.7% have stated the remote academy. That that last column that says overall response rate based on full enrollment, so that's then for Claremont, 56.6% of families have responded so far. So, they're a little over halfway. Brentwood, I think, did a blast today, or maybe yesterday, and has had a nice increase and now is over 70%. All building principals and schools are working to continue to collect that information, encourage parents, and we'll meet with principals tomorrow and talk further about really locking into parents. Our goal is, before school starts, to really know what parents' choice is, and we'll utilize staff when they return on the 10th to help us and literally contact families in-person to secure that information.
So, that that brings us to where we started, just a kind of review and next steps. So, again, it is our hope to get registration complete by Wednesday. As Tom said, if we need to start getting on the phone and calling people to talk through this, we'll absolutely do that. Our buildings will will push out reminders tomorrow as well to get our parents to to let us know what their preference is. We'll look at that data, and that'll help us determine what type of in-person program we can provide when it is safe to open. We will bring a recommendation based on the conversations we have following this to you guys next week. You'll be approving not only our plan, but there's the. You'll be approving not only our plan, but there's the in-person document, which was that, how many pages was that? 20? That 20-page document that really had all of our guidelines for in-person, including you have to wear masks. I mean, you know, we're expecting the governor to come out tomorrow and reinforce the fact that there's no choice. It's a mandate. You have to wear masks while at school, and we're expecting that announcement tomorrow. That will be included in that guideline, so that will become like board policy. So, that will help us deal with those scenarios, and you know, we have a full list of how we're gonna deal with any of the details for safety, for exposure, for contact tracing, et cetera. That'll be next Monday. And then, again, following that, we'll start the training with staff next Monday. We'll also have opening of school the following week. So, a lot is gonna happen in the next seven and 14 days. And then, we wanna look at, so again, the recommendation is to look at this on a regular basis and see what kids we can bring back to school safely. Could be a lot, could be a few, but that's our goal. So, that's a brief update. I'd like to now, we have SLT present. Respond to any questions that the board might have.
I have a question, Tom. So, right now, we have 51.5% of the families have responded. The, we're gonna ask staff to reach out, call parents that haven't responded yet. Parents that do not respond, what's going to be the default registration for them?
At one point, our plan was to default to the in-person. I think our hope and goal is that we do reach every parent, especially as school starts. Since we're starting remotely, we would expect to be able to reach every parent, to be able to make that selection as part of the process. But because we're all remote to start out, we're not as locked into we have to know by the 17th of where, what your selection is.
So, if we don't have 3% or 4%, we can still make a determination based on those numbers.
Sure.
Can I ask, I'm looking at one of the actual screen, the spreadsheet that you have. We have a total of enrollment of 5,700 or 5,900 students?
Currently, yes. I think we're at 59, 57. We're down a little bit. We're seeing a lower enrollment right now at kindergarten than we've seen in the past. Now, sometimes at this point of the year, we're still registering kids. But on the kindergarten side especially, we're down a few hundred kids compared to what we've seen normally. Last year, at the end of the year, we were about 5,400, and you have to keep in mind.
64.
64, thank you. My apologies. The ELC enrolls kids throughout the year. So, by the time that last year ended, I, off the top of my head, probably 350, 370 kids. Right now, they're about 2, what is it, 220-something, I think, 224. So, we're short on kindergarten. We're short on ELC. And our enrollment has shown that we're dropping. Our eighth and seventh grades are about 700 a grade level, and our, most of our others are in the 600s.
Maureen, do you expect that there will be any specific problems to the elementary level as compared with the junior high level as far as the virtual is concerned?
I think with both.
Sorry, I think with both. Something that we're gonna have to really work with students on are those schedules and routines, because students are gonna be logging on for live sessions throughout the day. So, I think that will be a challenge, but probably at both levels. So, we're going to have to help students know, okay, what time do I need to log on for my math lesson? And so, that will be a challenge. To be honest, junior high, now that we're having students start with their regular classrooms and teachers, that will be less of a challenge this week. I know our junior highs were really wanting to get started on. If we were gonna be re-shifting students to remote academy, taking them out of their junior high and those courses, that was going to be quite a challenge. So, that has been, I would say, postponed till a little bit later when we know when we're going back in person. Also, I will also mention too that it's not so much a challenge, but we still, like we did in summer, really are looking at ways that we can get non-digital supplies and resources to our students, so that everything they're doing is not on a screen. You know, we have math manipulatives, paper, pencil, whiteboards. That's kind of what we're working on as well, so that our students aren't always in front of a screen.
Patty, you had a comment?
I do, actually. I have a couple of things that I wanted to ask. For one, teachers are not gonna, if they're in their classroom at school, they're by themselves, they're distant, they do not have to have their mask on. Do you agree?
That's a great question. Actually, Dr. Ossel, was it ISBE that just updated their guidance that if a staff member is alone in their space or their classroom with the door closed, whether that's planning or grading or even virtual learning, they can remove their mask. And that's an exciting announcement, because if we are hosting remote learning through the screen, that barrier is then removed, and it still provides enough safety for the greater staff.
And I think that is gonna, that's gonna calm some of the teachers that are like, I'm not gonna be, my kids aren't gonna see my face. They're not gonna be able to understand what I'm saying. I think that will help a lot. Also, why, why don't we do for, so that we can actually give a set time? And you mentioned this about doing, you know, maybe doing the first quarter, right? Did you mention that? Doing the first quarter remotely. I mean, I have a feeling it's gonna go semester anyway, but if we give them that for families, for teachers, for everybody, they know that it's the timeframe. And I know we want to revisit, so that if we do get to change things, we can always update, but if we give them that solid, okay, this is how long, but it could, it could change. But if we do that, that time period, that timeframe, I think it'll make it a little easier for people to plan. I don't know. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I was trying to clarify that on the 8th, that does not signify that all kids are coming back. That just means that we were gonna take a look and see what the data is saying in terms of safety. Patty, it wouldn't surprise me if, I mean, I don't see things changing much. I was looking at the percentage again today. It altered, the Area 10, Region 10 increased again today to like 5.7, which is, which is, you know, 7/10ths of a percentage point over the CDC warning for safety. So, if I were a parent, I'd be looking at the whole first semester and making sure I have a plan for that. That's not to say that's gonna happen. What we were trying to do as we spoke was to just, every four weeks, take a look and say, are there groups of kids we can bring back, whether it's our special needs kids, or our newcomers, or kids new to the district, or even looking at some things to do with our kindergarten students in small groups. We wanna, we wanna have the ability to discuss that and make those decisions. If the board feels that we need to say, hey, definitively, we're not gonna bring large group of kids back until at the end of the first quarter, you know, that's something that, you know, the board could direct us to do or to include in that recommendation for next week. We could still say that on a regular basis, we're gonna look and see what kids we can bring back to make sure that we're supporting our neediest kids and neediest families.
And I think if it's worded that way, I think that will, that will be a little more comforting and a little more settling, that, oh, surprise, okay, we just come back, but for now, we're doing it for this timeframe, and I think that will do it. And also, I wanted to clarify one more thing. I'm sorry. I know I'm talking a lot. But if we, if a teacher, the teachers are working out of their classrooms unless they have a special medical. Is that correct? Or are they able to work at home if they have a specific space dedicated to those five hours, that there's no interruption?
I appreciate the chance to clarify. All staff are expected to report to school for work. If someone needs a medical accommodation, then we work individually with those individuals. We get doctor's notes. We're looking into additional supports as well. But I wanna be very clear that that would be something that you would work with the Human Resource Department on, and it is not a default option or choice. We have been committed to come back to work at school.
So, I just.
And we will have people spaced out protecting. They won't all be like four teachers in one classroom. It'll be, they'll be spaced out. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, and that's what we've been living at the Ad Center throughout the summer. And these last few weeks, we will absolutely have every safety protocol in place that's described in the plan and that we've been living at the Ad Center.
Okay. Robert, you had a question?
So, I just wanna make sure I understand it too. So, August 17th, school starts. All staff reports to school like they would any other year. Staff goes to their classrooms. September 8th, give or take, we examine how things are as far as the COVID numbers, and a, possibly a small number of students would return slowly phased in to the schools, whatever we can do safely. Okay. The question I had separate from that was.
Can we stay on that for a minute?
Oh, sure.
Because I'd like to finish up.
Yeah.
So, don't forget. I actually was gonna bring that up too, Patty. I pretty much feel the same way after thinking it through and hearing from multiple parents and everybody else that looking at a larger horizon gives us a little more stability as far as planning for daycare for, you know, what it's gonna look like for you. That doesn't mean, as Dr. Fessler said, that we wouldn't say, okay, we can start bringing in small groups of children. And so, I don't know what that looks like, but I think four weeks at a time makes people feel off-kilter. So, if we stated that we think we're gonna go out, you know, that nothing's, we don't see any evidence that it's gonna change until whatever date you wanna say, whether it's, you know, the end of September or some date in October. I know the districts are all over the map on the opening plans. I would be in favor of that, and I guess I'd be interested in hearing from other people.
Yeah, this is Courtney. If I could jump in, I'm not.
No, Courtney, you cannot jump in. You may not participate.
I can't hear a comment. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, I will listen. Thanks.
I wanna kind of go back to September 8th. I mean, I think we are seeing numbers right now. You know, they're, they're, I think we'll know before September 8th really what we could decide. So, I kinda wanna leave that. I kinda wanna leave that option out there too. If we see the numbers really changing, we can make a decision earlier of what, if we're gonna stay remote. But if we see some numbers kind of starting to go down, I also wanna leave the option to have, especially the kindergartner kids come in, in some sort of, in some sort of, in some sort of aspect, whether maybe hour or something like that, just, just so I get to meet the teacher, see the school. I mean, this is the big change for these kindergartners. You know, to truly, you know, for them to really try to be invested in their education, trying to get those kids in, trying to get the special needs kids in that really need that, you know, that help if they can't remote learn. I see that person. I like to, I like to see the idea of the small groups starting as soon as we can, and if we can do it safely.
I was gonna bring that up as a separate point
Yeah.
about kindergarten. So, I'm still curious about remote, and I agree with you. But I think that that makes it off-kilter for parents of small children. That makes it really hard. My thought on the kindergarten, I'm gonna respond to in a minute. I would like to know what other people think about extending remote at least a little bit longer so parents don't feel quite so off-kilter. We can always go to say, wow, look, celebration, we're gonna go to in-person. I think most parents would be, hallelujah, I can cancel my daycare plans.
And I agree with that, because at least they make their plans in advance and it's set. And if they have to cancel, it's fine. But if they have to, okay, now we've gotten to this point, and I gotta extend, I gotta make, make different plans. That does make it a little more unsettling for parents. If they, and that's what I'm seeing in a lot of what I'm reading, a lot of what I'm getting, is that if they have a set timeframe that, you know, okay, I've gotta, I've gotta get it for this first quarter, then it puts them a little more at ease.
I think so too.
But are we on a, we're on a trimester grade, we're on a trimester grading period, aren't we?
We're on trimesters at the elementary level and quarters at the junior high level, so it's slightly different at both levels.
Okay, so what, when does the quarter end for the junior high, and when does the trimester end for the elementary?
The quarter ends October 30th for junior high, and the trimester ends, I think it's right before winter break for elementary, because we did build in some transition time at the, at the beginning of the school year. And even the first quarter in junior high is a little longer than it would normally be, so that teachers feel like they can take the time needed to just transition back to school with the students. And I will add too, I think we would be looking at, like you said, those small groups are really unique cases. Who are the students that we really want to bring back in, whenever that is safe and we can come up with a plan, whether that's before September 8th, after September 8th? Those are, I know, discussions that are in the works too. How can we, for even small amounts of time, bring our neediest students?
Katie shared with me even in mid, or like August 24th, that we'll start bringing in some of our special needs kids. So, some of those plans are in place. We are also talking about doing some orientation for kindergarten.
Good, that's what I was gonna bring up.
And sixth grade students as well. So, those plans are in place, or we're developing those, but those things will happen.
Yeah, I wouldn't wait for kindergarten, because they're already gonna be a little bit at loose ends, and they don't know who their teacher is. They may not have a device. They may not understand. They may be manipulative.
We will be sending out a communication. Again, we need to get our registration wrapped up. We wanna share with our parents who their teachers will be as soon as possible. So, you know, if not, if not end of this week, early next week, we wanna get that, that return-to-school communication that we typically would send out like today. We wanna get that out in the next seven days.
Yeah.
Chris, do you have something?
I tend to agree with Brandy as far as if we're going to bring back any small groups at an earlier time, and I'm not saying at what time, but whenever it's gonna be. Certainly, the kindergartners will not do as well with the virtual or with the masks, so they'd be a good group to bring back, and the special ed. Those two groups probably should be the first two to come back.
No, but that may not be full-time. They're just talking about bringing them in for.
I didn't say that. I just said those should be the first two that we should consider bringing back.
What are we, what are we giving them for?
At whatever point and for however amount of time. I didn't specify that.
Okay, because it's not, it makes it sound the way you're saying, that they're back in school full-time or something.
All I said was I agree with him that they are the two that should come back first.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So, basically, my understanding is we kinda have two options kinda right now out here. We have one, wait until September 8th to make a decision if we're gonna go continue remote or bring the students back in, or potentially expand until October 30th, you said?
30th.
The 30th is the end of the quarter, so if we were going, and really, it's more significant at junior highs since they do change classes at the quarter mark.
Right.
At the elementary mark, the trimester is not quite as significant a milestone.
I want to hear from Chris too, please, if you have something you'd like to contribute.
So, a couple of things. Thank you, Dr. Fessler and the team. You folks have done a tremendous amount of work, and Janice, all the emails that you've been fielding on our behalf as a board. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So, in full disclosure, I am an in-person parent. I'm one of the 56% or whatever that had responded, and we had broken the news to our daughter that she's going to be continuing remote. She's disappointed, but she understands, as am I. We understand the data. It's tough to make decisions, especially when we're inundated with numbers. So, I'd like to ask two things. One, stealing from Slide 3, the reopening Illinois plan. If we can, or put something up or put something together that clearly outlines reopening CCSD 59, and just give us phases, it'd help staff, teachers, parents, the community know where we are and objectively trying to figure out what we're getting to. And then additionally, the data that you folks are looking at, when you, when we're trying to, when we're discussing safety and confidence, those are very vague, subjective terms. If we can just say, first Monday or every other Monday, we're just, have a dashboard, since I'm the dashboard guy, a couple of quick numbers that you folks are looking at, and it could be, it could be anything. One of the data points that'd be interesting is, what are the districts around us doing? And we can capture that data, report back, and everyone can look at it. Just like this, this phase plan that Illinois put together, it's really easy for all of us to understand where we are, and it eliminates a lot of the confusion and the frustration point. Objectively, here we are, point in time, every two weeks, look at the facts, look at rate of change. I think rate of change is more important than, than actual hard, raw data. Look at that data, make a decision, and we can go forward.
That's available already on IDPH, and I was gonna suggest that as well. I think that's really good to show what metrics we're currently using. That's not to say that something else might be learned about the virus that's gonna impact that. But right now, what comes out from the Illinois Department of Public Health about the hospitalization rates, like if it drops down to 20% or less, that's a trigger for mitigation. If you have a positivity rate that goes up over 8%, meaning that 8% of all the people that you're testing are positive, that triggers a reaction from the state. So, I think explaining that or providing guidance would be really helpful to people, because they have been asking, how do you make that decision? And we do have some things that we look at, and all districts are looking at those same factors. There's also a really great website called Chalkbeat that I think maybe you can forward to them that talks about every single district in the area and what they're. that talks about every single district in the area and what they're doing on every single day. So who just announced today is on that list.
Thank you, and one of the thing, last point to highlight, I believe, Ross, you mentioned that it's ISB, ISBE guidance in a particular response to something. It's really important for parents in the community and staff members to know, there's, there's many things at this point that is out of our hands, whether we like it or not. And I think articulating that, in, in some, some way, shape or form, just to say, hey, there, this is it. We, we're operating within a framework that we have. It changes, but some of, some of the things that we're doing, we, we, as much as, as much as I wanna reopen and have my kids in class, I can't. So, so that would probably help eliminate a lot of confusion.
Yeah.
So thank you.
That's a good suggestion. Actually, about a week or so ago, Tom had already prepared a draft. We looked at another model that was, was it the Peoria model, or, no, it was the one, the one model.
Dr. Fessler, real quick, can you turn your microphone on? And board members, can you remember to keep the mics closed, 'cause we're losing a lot of you in the audio?
Sorry.
Sure, yeah, the point I was making is that we've done a little, Tom has already done a little draft work around that. So I think attaching that, and then the factors that you're suggesting. I know Katie and, and our town hall mentioned four factors that we are looking at closely, that are safety factors, to Janice's point, that are pulled from the Illinois Department of Health website. We can put those two together and provide a nice visual.
You could even just put in a link for what other districts are doing, you know, to that site, Chalkbeat or whatever, to provide so you don't have to do a lot of updating.
And, and.
Dr. Fessler, I think it's been very helpful that you have kept in touch with all the surrounding districts and given us their feedback and so forth, and I think you should continue with that, because there are, obviously, we are mirroring each other, so we might as well keep in touch with what.
Yeah, that's a good point. So every Tuesday and Thursday at twelve, the District two fourteen high school, the feeder, the feeder sender school districts, and then the two eleven with fifty-four and eleven, we meet and just talk about the work that we're doing, the challenges. We share resources, and we've had over forty meetings since this has happened, and it has been very helpful to, to share resources and ideas. And we have tried to remain in sync in terms of what we're doing in terms of delivery service models, but they do vary a little bit, because our, some of our communities are pretty different, but pretty close for the most part.
And, and to jump on what Chris said and what Janice had said, I think the, you know, I'm trying to look at it, putting my shoe, you know, a, a lot of folks that wanna go back to school, and, and even the questions that the staff have about going back to school. And I think it's just that it's not easy for the SLT and for the administration and for the district to give these definite answers of, this is gonna happen, and then this will happen, and this will happen, and then this will happen. So even when we look at September eighth, it's hard, because what is gonna change from now to September eighth? And how much runway of time do you have to notify parents of that change? Are we going to make a decision halfway through? Then it's basically two weeks, and what are we looking at? How much data are we looking at? But I understand that from parents, the parent perspective of, school is that great, you know, stability in their lives. The school day is from eight to three or whatever, you know, however long it is, and not knowing what to do with their kids when, when, when the schools are closed. But even if we were to open up, it, it's, it's, it's not if, but when. If something bad were to happen, or if a positive case were to happen. Look, look at all of us, we all have masks on, we're all separated. We can't act like it's normal. Every part of our life is not normal, and school needs to adjust to it as well. So, you know, it, it's, it's very hard, but I, I know Chris mentioned, you know, with, with all the comments from the, from the staff and from the, from the families that had reached out to us, and some were very honest, very brutally honest, and we read all these emails, but it, it's just very hard to find those right answers, you know, of, of how to do this the right way.
Yeah, and, and you know, to add to that, Robert, it can't be like the positivity rates are four percent, and then, you know, we come back for two weeks and then we have to close down again, because they moved back up over five percent. So it has to be some significant change in the data to trigger that.
It's five point eight percent now as of July thirty-first, which is the latest update in the Illinois Department of Public Health site. And so we keep moving up. I mean, it was five, not two weeks ago, and then it was five point four.
Nine consecutive days of increase.
Right.
'Cause I mean, that's what I was looking at, you know, when we, when the schools shut down in, in March, in the state of Illinois, there were twelve cases, you know, give or take, you know? And, and when the, when the board presented the original plan, that did not include the delayed or the remote start. July thirteenth, we had, I think, eight hundred cases in Illinois, you know? And since it's eighteen hundred, it's nineteen hundred, it's getting close to two thousand, it keeps going up. You know, so it, it, it's tough. I mean, it's just, it's, it's such a hard decision.
It is, but you know what? The thing is, the school, school is not going to look like we all remember it. This is gonna be very different, and it's gonna be like, like for kindergartners, their first impression of school. So we also, it, it's hard to take that into consideration as well, because when those little ones go to school, they see their teacher in a mask, they see distancing, they see shielding and everything. You see the other kids get, go back, they're seeing their friends for the first time in a long time, and they wanna be by them. These are all things that, these kids, they, they have no idea, because it's not the life that we grew up in, but it's the reality for them now. So when they go back to school and they're thinking, oh, it's gonna be all normal.
Yeah, no way.
It's not.
Right.
But, but, mm, okay.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I, actually I did have a question, actually, as to the process though, maybe for Maureen. The, so parents that elect to go in-person instruction, ISBE guidelines say they can go to remote anytime. What's that transition gonna look like? How much time are we talking about, next day, or?
I, I think if, if we were to have, you know, when we get to that point where we have an, an in-person option and a remote option going, I think we are asking parents to do that at certain intervals, so that we are not disrupting both classes with really frequent changes and kids going from one option to the other.
In all of our communications, we've asked them to commit to the first quarter or trimester. So we've been, we've been very, we've been very clear about that. And we're still looking at our models, so again, once we, once we get our registration complete, we wanna look at, at, you know, revisit those options for how we provide remote synchronous learning versus remote academy. So those numbers are, are really important, and then again, whatever model we run, we wanna have flexibility so that it can remain as fluid as possible, because we also have to think about, we, as you guys know, we received a number of, of emails from parents asking about positivity rates, and, you know, if, if someone is in close contact and the teacher is out, what happens there? Or if, if kids are out, you know, how does that piece work? How are we supporting them virtually? So again, once we finish our, our registration, and then we'll update the board next week, we'll have, I think, a better idea of what our models could look like for remote academy versus maybe a synch, a synchronous approach to that as well. So the planning teams are kinda working through that as well, trying to establish as much flexibility from our parents, because as you guys know, many of the communications are, we're getting are, you know, do we have the flexibility to move? It's hard to make this decision and so forth.
I guess, I feel, sorry, that was pretty loud. I guess I feel that, again, that we really should push the date out just because it's always easy to say, okay, yes, we're gonna go to in-person, hallelujah. But I think because we're leaving it the way it is, it's not clear enough for parents. And so I think we should say something like, you know, October thirtieth, with the full understanding that if it really does drop and we can open, sure, we'll do it. You know, people could decide then if they wanna stay in remote or they wanna go to in-person, but the other way around is too hard to try to manage against. So that, that's my preference. The other piece.
I gotta agree with that, Janice.
Okay, good. The other piece, though, that I'd like to address is I've even heard that some parents are refusing to sign up because they don't know whether they're gonna be in hybrid or full. And I think that's another area where we might wanna just make a decision about it and say we're gonna be in hybrid, and then people will have to at least plan for that. And if we end up in full, great, but if we don't, it's like the worst-case scenario, 'cause I'm a little bit worried that we're in the same situation with not being able to be very clear with parents about what the orderly transition will be. And if it turns out that, you know, we can go full in-person, great. But at least it provides some understanding that we're gonna be the most cautious and the most planful in kinda the worst-case scenario, so that they can make accommodations accordingly. It's just my idea on that.
I, I kinda don't wanna change the subject, but I wanna kinda ask, you know, we're talking about, you know, potential when the kids go back or bringing groups in. How is it gonna work with busing and stuff? I mean, these bus companies, we can't let them know overnight, hey, we need this all of a sudden, or we need that. How's that gonna work? I mean, I.
That's a good question.
I know, and people should understand that things are changing dramatically, but everything that we're talking about is an immense task for the SLT, for the team to take on.
Yep.
To go remote, to assign teachers and all those other, it's a, and every change we're making is, makes our task monumental even more. And now we're gonna add, I wanna add in the busing under that. Now we're gonna go, if we're talking about going fully remote till April, I wanna ask about meals for families and stuff like that, what we've been doing. I mean, there's a lot that we need to consider, and every decision we make has a dramatic impact on the amount of work that our staff is doing and how much they can contract, and takes away from them actually preparing and getting ready for the students to come in, and for teaching after students, getting ready to teach the students, stuff like that, so.
A bigger challenge, Randy, is parents now driving kids to school. So, you know, you've, you've been contacted about some of the issues we have with morning drop-off and safety issues. Uh, in our survey to parents, when we asked how many would be taking transportation that don't, that, that have it but will now be driving their kids, it was significant.
Right.
That's, that's a concern we have too, so, you know, we've discussed building, you know, some staggered schedules to potentially mitigate that, but, you know, in terms of busing, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna run transportation, we'll schedule bus routes, we'll reach out to families and figure out who needs transportation like we have in the past. The food, the food piece is a little tricky. I think we're kind of in a transition period right now, that at some point, Ron and Ross had shared with me that the regulations or the approach will switch from what we were able to do in terms of providing lunches and how that will play out in, in the first four weeks of the school year. So they're working on those details of that plan right now. We obviously fully intend to make sure that our kids are, are being fed even during the remote period, but they're working on that plan right now.
And breakfast too, I hope.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I guess, to me then, that's also another reason why you might wanna look at hybrid to start with, because if you're saying we're gonna go into hybrid, then you can plan what small groups would look like anyway, and you know how many kids maximum would be on a bus, which might influence how parents feel comfortable about sending their child on a bus.
But that adds, I mean, but then, so we're, so we're basically taking the, we're either talking the remote now and a hybrid and a fully in-school, or we talk?
No, no, hybrid would be a transition to fully in-school, because it's safer to, you're guaranteeing that you're gonna have fifteen students or less in a class, you're guaranteeing.
I have a question on that at some point too.
That the buses would be with far fewer students. You, if you did a two-day in and three-day home, you would give yourself a full day to clean the schools down. You know, there's a lot of things, but that's up to them to try to figure out the logistics, you know? But they need our direction as to what we'd like to see. We've heard some of their recommendations.
But I, I think, I think one thing we talked about was, we've talked about, you know, full in-school, remote, and then possibly bringing in small groups, correct? That's, and that's the way that I've heard this whole discussion. And now I'm hearing this hybrid, which adds that next to layer complexity, or I'll try to use a scaffold model, you know, it adds another layer of complexity to the whole.
But Randy, that hybrid was always there, because if you have more than fifteen kids in a classroom, you're gonna be forced to go to hybrid. So what I'm saying is, if you think you're gonna be forced to go to hybrid, why don't you just say you're gonna go to hybrid? And if it turns out you can go fully open, then fine, because that's the trigger if you have more than fifteen in a class.
But does, can some schools, I mean, knowing like some of our schools have smaller attendance populations, that fifteen per classroom is not unreasonable, and would be actually be less than that.
No, I mean, if you do the math on the forty percent at elementary schools, the majority of our elementary could run with, if, if, even if sixty percent attended, the majority of our elementaries could run the five, the five-day full instruction with forty percent being gone.
Right.
There are, as we showed in, in some of the initial registrations, if you look at Claremont, that, that would be a little different. We'd have to look at some other alternatives, 'cause they've got.
They're a full school already.
Right.
Yeah, they've got, what was it, eighty percent, seventy-eight percent.
Right.
So, so for most of our schools at the elementary, we could do it. Middle school would be a, a little more challenging. Looking at the percentages there, sixty-six percent, you know, because the class sizes there are closer to, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, whereas elementary, they're, for the most part, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. You know, we've got spikes on both sides of that.
Right.
So, um, you know, Maureen, in your planning teams, as, as you work with teachers, do they stress interest in, in one approach or the other?
I think the conversations with teachers have mostly been, you know, feeling that for the safety of everyone, you know, that a hybrid could be an option to look at if that meant we have fewer students in the building, fewer students on the bus, you know, especially when we think about everything that has to happen within a school day. So a hybrid does, you know, really offer that reduced number of students. I mean, I think all of our staff are eager to get back to work and get students back to school, but really concerned that we do it safely, and I think, like you described, gradually is something that we often hear teachers saying too, they just wanna make sure we are safe.
This is Chris, I have a clarifying question. Just, I, and I may have missed it. So the number fifteen, is that guidance number? Is, how did we arrive to that number?
Largely, so, so when we did our, our, our capacity numbers for the six-feet social distance, it was like ten to twelve. When we look from three to five feet, it's about fif, it's about fifteen kids. So CDC is, is strongly recommending the six-foot. At one point in time, the owner, health department made a suggestion that three feet would be acceptable. I don't know if they've waffled from that and have gone to the six, but, you know, the reports that we've heard from, from medical experts is that, you know, with masks, three, three feet is the least amount, six feet is good, nine feet is the best. We don't think we can accomplish nine feet. Uh, and then in conversations with our DEA leadership team, and again, this wasn't voted on or anything, you know, the comfort level fifteen was mentioned as the maximum number that, that they would consider. But again, that conversation was a few weeks ago. John, I don't know if the DEA still feels that way, but, but that, that's, that's the history of the numbers.
You know, it's a, I mean, growth, you're talking even sixty percent of growth, you're still talking six hundred kids.
Yeah.
For the school, and, you know, so you can break it into three or four hundred, that's right?
Right.
That would be a lot easier for them around that, wouldn't it?
Yeah, so, so a hybrid at the elementary school may not be as necessary as the middle school, where numbers are very, very different.
Well, it might be though, I mean, if you're saying fifteen students gives you three to five feet, I'm less comfortable with that than trying to stick with six. I just think, you know, kids are not gonna, there's gonna be failures where they don't keep their masks on the way they should. It's better if they're more distant from each other, but that's, again, that's my opinion.
If you look around this room right now, there's fifteen people in this room, and this is a large, large room. So if you put fifteen people in a small, half of this size, what would be a normal classroom, we'd be pretty close together, yes, sir.
Right.
I would say, but the perimeter right now, with Tom and the rest of the board, is probably the size of a classroom.
Right.
So picture how you can be, you know, with you having them basically that's.
And we've got fifteen in here now, right, so that's a good point.
And, and I think that's the thing, a lot of times I think about that, and a lot of the comments we've received have said, the state said you can do fifty or less in a space, as long as you social distance and wear masks and, and clean and disinfect. But when we're looking at the school, it's more than, it, it's, there's how many spaces are we talking about? There's twenty spaces and all the kids, and, and it's easy to say, here is the plan, and go implement it, but we're dealing with sixty-six hundred variables that are gonna go out there and pull masks down and hug their friends that they haven't seen. You know, it's natural, I wanna shake hands, I haven't seen you guys in a long time, but I can't, you know? And, and, and it's, it's just, it's, it's all those factors that need to go into account of, we can open it, but let's open it safely when we are confident that we can open it safely.
And you, you also have to look at the size of the classrooms. That's another, I mean, you've got how many different sizes of classrooms where maybe comfortably you could accommodate, and then there's that, those, the other smaller ones that are kinda quirky in shape, that you're just like, okay, no, this is way too tight. So then you have to take that into consideration.
I thought you guys did some surveying of some classrooms. Did we get some data from that? So what are we looking at? If we're gonna, if we want six foot?
Ten, ten kids.
Ten kids. Ten kids, so to me, that still says hybrid.
So, um, just to clarify then, I'm hearing the board, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing a hybrid model at elementary, middle school with a remote start until the end of the first, um, trimester, or October thirtieth?
Can I, how would a hybrid, can you, can you give an example how a hybrid would work? Because I'm just, I'm trying to envision it myself, and I have a couple of ideas how it is, but, I, I mean, I would envision that, you know, let's say, you have teacher A has twenty-five kids for grade two. So, Monday, Wednesday, I can envision a hybrid being Monday, Wednesday, Friday, twelve of those kids come in, and then thirteen of the kids are learning asynchronous. And then Tuesday and Thursday, the other twelve kids would come in, and then the other group that was in Monday, Wednesday, and Friday would be asynchronous learning, and the next week that would switch. Is that kind of how you would envision the hybrid to work?
That's difficult, I, I think it's difficult to do that because of the amount of cleaning that's going on. I think you're better off having the same kids and the same assigned seats.
Maybe do a Monday through Friday for one group, and then next week they switch to remote?
Well, probably not, because they're going to need direct instruction. So I would, I was thinking, Monday, Tuesday for one group, Wednesday would be deep cleaning.
And full remote.
And Thursday, right, and Thursday, Friday would be the other group. So they would be only in two days a week, you could do three one week and three the next week, you know what I mean? If you wanted to do all five days, but better to run them.
I like the midweek cleaning, I know I've mentioned this before, because if you have Monday, Tuesday, that you have group A that goes, goes Monday, Thursday, you have group B that goes, goes Tuesday, Friday, then Wednesday's there deep cleaning, and the weekend, they're going to clean again. But, you know, before the weekend, they're going to clean again, so that.
Yeah, but if.
If we're going to do the deep cleaning, I would, the same group would be Monday, Tuesday, and the new group would be Thursday, Friday. That way you wouldn't have to clean, do the extra cleaning on Monday night and day out.
Right.
All right, but whatever, I think the midweek cleaning is, is, it would be crucial.
So, my question is, how long, I mean, we know that this is an, um, an aerial virus. I mean, how long did it really truly last time surfaces?
Surfaces are not the problem, it's if you breathe in the droplets, from everything that I've read, it's really the droplets.
They're saying it can be in the air for nineteen, nineteen hours.
Nineteen hours, okay.
What I've heard most, up to nineteen hours most recently.
Okay, so it's up to nineteen hours, so, so, class ends at, school ends at three o'clock, nineteen hours is, doesn't give them time for those droplets to theoretically settle?
But they start to drop off really quickly. So, when they studied, for example, surfaces or in the air, they start dying off really fast. So the, the actual load in a room is much lower as those hours go by.
Correct. So, that's, that's why, that's why maybe I'm questioning the need of having, you know, two days, deep cleaning, two days. Or theoretically, the next, by, by, when the day ends, by the next day, most of the room is basically cleaned itself already without.
If you leave.
You don't have to go in there and completely sanitize the whole room.
If you leave the room alone for that one day, yes, so it's.
Surfaces are different, I mean, so depending on the type of surface, it can last from one day to three days, whether it's plastic or paper.
Right.
So that, that varies, but the bottom line is, as soon as kids get back in there the next day, within five minutes, everything, you know, is, is, it's gone. So, I struggle with, I mean, I'm not opposed to the deep cleaning idea, but I just wonder if, you know, it's worth not having our kids in school for an extra day as part of the hybrid, so they're in a three-two or two-three rotation.
Well.
But it.
Yeah, three, yeah, that's probably better, three.
Well, you could do that, here's, here's the, the risk I see, is what you're really doing with the small numbers is, you know there's going to be transmission, there are going to be kids that come in that are positive, that are going to spread it. That is going to happen, you're not going to avoid it. So what this does is prevent widespread outbreaks, because you're limiting the number of kids who can potentially get sick, and the number of teachers, to a small group. So you've got ten kids in a class and a teacher, you can really control an outbreak so much better with small numbers.
It sounds like we should just stay in remote, I mean, if, if we're saying that it's inevitable that.
Of course, I mean, there's a whole New York Times study that was based on some work by, um, Northwestern that tells you, based on how big your school is, whether it's a school of a hundred, five hundred, or a thousand, how many kids statistically are likely to get, to come in already positive on day one. And in Illinois, it's much lower than other states like Louisiana, but statistically, you're not going to avoid it, it's out there. You know, you can hide under a mattress, but, you know, here we're all talking about relative risk, right?
One, one more clarifying question, when, when does this registration officially close? Is there a deadline or, or, or ideal deadline?
Yeah, Wednesday, Wednesday, this, this week, Wednesday.
So two days from now?
Yes, the fifth.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to stop talking, I'm doing too much talking.
I'd just like to make one comment. Obviously, the main thing that concerns me and probably everybody else is the safety of everybody, that, that's our main concern. If somebody ended up in the hospital and the parents couldn't be with the child, it would be horrible, just horrible. But, because of that, we have to do some virtual teaching. And I'm all for doing virtual teaching as much as we absolutely need. The only thing I want to be sure of is that our teachers are trained as often and as much as is necessary, so that we definitely have the teachers ready to teach virtually, so that our children will learn. Because what we did last, last spring was, was not at all acceptable. So virtual teaching, although it's not our favorite, is, is obviously going to be used, and it's got to be done absolutely correctly by everybody, and that's my main concern.
I want to make a point on that, I don't think that that was fair. I think there were areas with, um, that were done better than others, and it may have depended upon teachers. I think everybody really tried, I think the elementary, um, was a lot more successful. I do think there were successes, but obviously, they're going to do a lot to improve it, because the conditions are different.
I, 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 go ahead Patty.
I think the plans that they have, that they've got going forward look wonderful.
I agree.
It looks so good, I think that we're going to be much more successful, and we're moving forward. We're not going to be, um, restrained in trying to get this, uh, to be successful. I, I think we've got a good thing in place, and once we get it moving forward, eh, the kids are going to start learning, and the teachers are going to become more comfortable with it.
I agree, I mean, it's a mastery model, and that's something that we were moving towards anyway. And I think there's going to be a lot of successes for students who are able to get the support that they need to do the work.
So, so direction, um, can we get a consensus of the board of what the direction is? And then we can, again, bring a, we can actually draft a plan, share that with the board, um, in the very near future in preparation for board action next Monday, so.
So who wants to, um, who's, who's in favor of keeping the date at September eighth? And who's in favor of extending it to say, let's say, October thirtieth?
I don't, I don't like the September eighth date. I want to see, and I know you sent it to us earlier, where the neighboring districts are extending to, to kind of see what the consensus is with the other districts, because a lot of, I think, I think Schaumburg fifty-four just announced that they went remote, as we're having this meeting, um, just to see where, where everyone is landing.
Yeah, fifteen and fifty-four announced, uh, today, and most of them are like in October, but all of them are having the same conversation about a slow rollover of adding kids based on need, um, as soon as possible. So that, that's pretty consistent among all of the school districts, I did resend that to you, uh, to, today. Um, but yeah, many are, are that first week of October, some are the end of October, so they're kind of split throughout the month of October.
So, okay, so who's in favor of September eighth? Anybody? Are we more in favor of October thirtieth, understanding that we're still going to check every four weeks to figure out what we can and can't do? Is everyone okay with that?
So on, so on October thirtieth date, that's the end of the grading period, with the goal of slowly phasing in students prior to that date?
Well, we'd have to see, it's another, it's another, figure it out at that point.
But we're, we're telling parents basically that we're not going to be back into full in-person prior to October thirtieth. We may have some group of needy kids that will be providing services to.
Yeah, chances are, it means no in-person, it means staying in remote with some groups.
Right.
You know.
I think the end of October is too long, too late.
So what would you propose?
For the first, the first deal.
Well, we're still checking.
I don't know, it ma- it makes it easier for, for the grading period as well.
Because I, I think, I think it's, it's a double-edged sword here, where if we say September eighth, and then we're going to reassess, and then September first, we send an email saying, it's going to be September twenty-eighth now, and we're going to reassess, and then we send another email saying it's October fourteenth. I think a lot of the problems, eh, that have been raised in the, in the staff and community comments are just that uncertainty as to what's going on.
Exactly, that's why I want to say October thirtieth and be done, and then we can always open earlier. Parents have a choice of staying in remote or opening earlier, I don't, I'm not saying we should never look at that. But I just think it's more planful for people.
And again, I wouldn't be surprised if we're in remote for the whole first semester, if the trend continues like it is now.
We really don't know until we get started.
And Illinois is on an island, and we're surrounded by a bunch of other states that are having significantly more issues than we are.
Right.
I mean, we could be back to phase three, and it's ten, ten people or less, and all this for, yeah.
So, my thoughts are, I, I'm liking the, saying we're going to be remote till October thirtieth, but I would like to say we need to make a decision after October thirtieth, for the next quarter. We have to pick a date when we want to make that decision by.
Right, like October twenty-fifth or whatever.
I think, well, I think we should, I think, I think we want to give, if we're, if we're really doing this, allow time, time for families to plan and stuff like that, I think we need to kind of set for, like, early October, like, beginning of October, start really saying what we're going to make that next decision for going on. By then, we should have numbers, an idea of how this is going in October, because that's two months away.
It's every, it's every seven days that they're looking at the positivity rate.
Right.
So you may or may not have already tipped, I mean, they're going.
Right, but, but we're, we're, we're going to see, we're going to see a trend, we're going to see, we're going to, we're going, we can, we can, we can see trends, we can start acting on those trends.
We're already seeing it.
So I said, I mean, I'm, I'm for the staying remote, um, through October thirtieth, with the idea of bringing in people, that we can bring in in small groups and stuff like that, that those need, those, eh, eh, as we've seen, as, as the needs are, to meet their needs, but I would like to also have us commit to making a decision beyond that October thirtieth, as early as possible.
Yeah, I think a couple of the school districts have indicated that they're going to run through the end of October, but revisit it, the, I think, uh, October seventh or eighth, revisit what it looks like beyond October thirtieth, and try to make a decision, uh, in early October, the first week of October.
That gives, that gives families three or four weeks to, two to three weeks to really get their next plan, their continuing planning. I'm good with that then.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
I'd agree with that too.
That's the majority. So hybrid, so I'm hearing late start and, later start, and then a hybrid, was that the other?
I don't know what other people.
I'd like to stay with, I will, I'd like to stay with the, the two options, either fully remote or full in-person. That's what I would, I, I would say we should set that as our thing for October thirtieth.
And we will have some time, I mean.
Yeah, we'll have time, we can, we can modify that too.
Considering that piece, if we're moving out to October, we do have some time to look at that carefully. And even look at some different models, I did have a couple of parents ask if there's any way that we could do both. Uh, I don't, I don't know, but I'm willing to at least investigate to see if there is an option for full in-person or a hybrid approach, uh, choice.
As long as it doesn't make our teachers all crazy and.
Yeah.
Uh, see, the only reason I said it, Randy, was because I think that's the safest way. Because if you're saying you want six-feet distance between students, if your rates are still elevated, you're going to need to go hybrid already.
And I, and I think, I think that may end up happening for the junior high, because of the numbers we have in the junior highs, but.
Even elementary.
Hope, hope, I mean, I'd like, hopefully if we can get the elementaries, the more kids I want to get in, the, the goal would be to get as many kids as possible we can get in the school as possible.
That would always be the goal.
Again, this will give us plenty of time to look at the numbers, so I guess we don't need to make that decision right now.
Okay, I had some other questions, and it's getting later and later, so, um, I know that teachers are concerned, we've had a fair number of teachers who are worried about the safety in the schools for themselves, even while we're remote, I know that there's been work done, and I know there's guidelines. One of the things that concern me, um, just as an example, is if they don't have to wear masks in classrooms, then they need to be discouraged from having meetings with other staff in their classrooms, because that's when the droplets are in the air. So, I mean, I think there has to be some very clear guidance about how teachers need to go forward. They cannot plan in a classroom where they haven't been wearing a mask, um, and do.
I'm sorry, Janice, can't they still do Zoom between classrooms?
Well, if they're in their own classroom and they're doing Zoom without a mask on, then they are sending out, if they're, if they're positive for COVID nineteen, then they're going to be breathing out in their classroom, and if they're singing or shouting or anything like that, it's so much worse. So, once they've done that without a mask in their own classroom, they don't want to invite their team into their classroom to do planning.
Right.
That's all I'm saying, so I'm, I'm saying they need some guidance to be reassured that, you know, you've looked at everything. And one of the things that I don't know anything about, but has come up, and I wonder about is, and even when I go into a store, if I have to, what's the airflow, what are the filters, what are the concerns through that? Because we know, for example, on cruise ships, it was an issue, I don't think it's much of an issue in schools, but I would want to know, um, if there's anything else we can look at to be sure that we can reassure our staff that, yes, we've looked into this, and it is safe for you to be in your classroom.
I think one thing we can add about that is, we've also done a lot of upgrading our HVAC systems this summer.
Exactly, perfect.
Which is helping.
And some univents too.
And some univent stuff, so we, you know, we've had, we've been lucky with that, we've addressed that, and we're hopefully to try and be able to get, maybe we can get some more stuff in, now we've decided we're going to be remote longer.
Yeah, Ron, Ron has, has been contacted by a couple of companies that have some, uh, options for filtration, so I know that we've looked into it. Um, Ron, I don't know if you have any, any updates that you'd want to share, but I know that, um, there has been at least some research.
So for example, I apologize with the, hang on, Ron, quick, you got to go there. Oh, sorry, just really briefly. Just before the meeting, Albert and I actually had dinner over air purifiers, and, uh, because I guess that's what we do. And, um, they had an eye wave air purifier that we've been looking at for, um, pricing, because it takes the air and actually cleans it itself, and it can be utilized with the new HVAC system
Okay.
that we use, and the rate of reduction, for example, for COVID nineteen is ninety-nine point four percent.
Wow.
Yeah, um, this is what everybody's using right now, from McDonald's, to hospitals, to, um, any sort of large universities, but we want to be the first ones to be able to use it, at least at the high school level. So we're, we're, we're working on a meeting on that.
So what's, what's the cost look like? You don't know yet.
Uh, to be determined.
I mean, that's.
Your budget right now.
Because I mean, who's looked at it to know whether or not the air is clean enough without adding that? You know, what is it, we don't know, and if we don't need it, I mean, obviously, we're all going to be scared and go, yeah, let's get it, but do we really need it? And I don't know how to determine that, or if the data's out there to figure it out.
But that's up to me and Albert, we'll figure it out for you.
Yay, all right, I like that answer, thank you very much.
The, um, another quick question before we jump off, Maureen, I believe this one might be for you. So, the, the recommendation is two and a half hours of live instruction, is that going to be the requirement here? Or is the, is it, what, what's going to be the rule, what's the expectation for parents here?
So we're, we're setting up our, our daily remote schedule, and I, I should say, that's not two and a half hours in a row. You know, we have two and a half hours of live, and then two and a half hours of, uh, at your own pace. It will be more throughout the day. So our literacy lesson starts with a live mini lesson, then students might be doing their practice at their own pace, but the teacher might still be meeting with small groups, that's still synchronous time. So there will be portions that are synchronous and portions that are asynchronous. We are looking at, um, the current schedule we have, does have an asynchronous block at the end of the day. We were looking at compacting a little bit, more of the direct instruction synchronous, eh, earlier in the day, just because we know that's harder, ki- kids, teachers, everyone fatigues. The remote learning piece is fatiguing more so than being in the classroom, you're sitting longer. We built in breaks, lunch, you know. We built in breaks, lunch, you know, things that are really on a timetable like that. So I think our, we will probably exceed the 2.5 hours, but it will be spread out throughout the day. It won't be two and a half hours in a row.
Yeah. And what, and what about the like, a set, like tests and quiz, how, how are they going to be done?
Well, our teachers have learned the most amazing tools for that. In fact, that's um something we're looking at as part of our PD. That what do checks for understanding look like if teacher just wants to do that, checking for understanding? There are things like, say Flipgrid and Parada, I, I'm probably saying the wrong names, I'm just throwing out some names. But wait, things that they can use that for. In terms of tests, like diagnostic assessments we're talking about, most companies have come out with guidance for administering those remotely. A conversation we've had has been, and it's, you know, to be determined. Can we bring students in, in small groups, in a safe way? Our younger ones especially for that. We're, you know, we're going to have to see if the conditions are right for that.
Yeah.
But our staff, more than anything, I, after the iReady training last week, I got a lot of emails saying, I would lo- it would be great if we could bring the kids in, even in small groups. Um, if we really want to use that data to plan, we want to make sure it's valid.
Yeah. So, so even now that we're grading, and the big difference being that we're grading this time around, there's no controls or checks in place to make sure that like a family member is not assisting the child to complete the work?
I mean, I think eh that will be, that will be a challenge. I think teachers will have to look at multiple indicators. For example, what I loved about some of like the iReady uh training and the tools they have developed for training students, you're going to take an assessment and you need to make sure it's your work and your best. Otherwise, your daily work is not going to be right for you. So they've developed all these student friendly tutorials, videos, ones for parents, you know, in the home while your child's doing this here. Again, it is, is it going to be, you know, as valid and reliable as we would like? No, but probably the teachers are going to see that, boy, the daily work is not matching what I saw on that assessment. But then again, we do feel like our, eh, the older the student, the more accustomed they are to those things.
Yeah.
That if we had to prioritize, we would be looking at our K1, 2 possibly, if we were able to do some live assessment. I think that would be our, our preference. That would be the age group we'd be looking at.
Okay.
That'd be great. Um, you know, I, that's one of the reasons that I thought that bringing in kindergarteners early would be great. Either one-on-one to meet the teacher or in small groups, that you could actually do the assessments. So you'd have a baseline, you'd know where they're coming from, since you don't know this group.
And we did have a lot of teachers that also emailed me saying, I'd be happy to do that, I would volunteer to come in, you know. So I think we would have a crew to do that. We would have to, again, just think differently. So that teachers, students that day, could another teacher be um conducting the remote learning while teacher A was in the building doing small groups of assessment. Again, we would like to do that, we just want to make sure it, like everything else, we can do it safely. We're not going to put anybody at risk by doing that.
Good.
I think, I think what you just said helps me a little bit because you're talking more about system. And when I said that I didn't like what we did in the spring, it wasn't that I was knocking the teachers, that wasn't the issue. The system was completely wrong. But if we get the system right this time, the teacher should be able to handle it and we should be able to actually have progress.
Yeah, I think we're looking at our remote instruction, you know, really mirroring a school day. We did not have that opportunity in the spring. So really, it will look more like a regular school day for sure than anything that happened in the spring.
I had a question about the resources. I think the resources sound like a great set to work with um and all these other products. One of the things that occurred to me is, are there going to be artificial barriers to allowing them to continue? Say they get really excited about a topic. Some kid is really on this and fascinated by what they're learning in math, and they want to continue. Is that possible? Are there enrichment pieces so they don't start going over what the teacher's going to do the next day? Like, how does that work? I assume we would want to support our children in inquiry.
Just have an acceleration basis, so kids can continue to, to work beyond.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, most of them are, have either the individualized path, which is going to be just what I need, or the teacher can assign. So maybe today we're doing fractions, I want to assign a fractions lesson, because I want to just see where the kids are falling with this.
Okay, sounds great.
All right, thank you. We, I think we've got the direction, so we'll be ready to present a draft to you guys sometime, if not at the end of this week, uh, early next week. And then we'll bring that um to, uh, actually, we'll have a draft this week, uh, ready for uh questions and then we'll present Monday for board action, next Monday.
Okay.
Maureen, can I just ask you one last thing, just so it's on the record?
Of course.
We are not staying stagnant, we are moving forward with, with teaching. Every, they're, they're going to be learning new material.
Correct.
Correct, yes it is.
Parents and teachers to understand, this is going to be different than what they saw in the spring.
Correct, it, that is, we were, we are looking, focusing on grade level essential learning targets. Now, might a teacher need to ye- go back to the previous grade level to assess, to see if they've mastered it? Probably, but our focus will be on mastery of current grade level targets.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, sounds great. So we're on to um 7.0 action items. Um, 7.01, the budget. And uh, do you have specific things you're going to present to us, Ron?
Are you going to share this, the information from the presentation slides or are you just taking action?
I was just uh going to share that.
Okay.
These slides?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right, good evening, Dr. Fessler, members of the board.
Evening.
Good evening.
There we go. Thank you, Tom.
Your first biggie, big thing.
So let's not mess up, shall we? Okay. So let's go over the timeline for adoption to begin. So uh, before this, back in June 8th, uh, when uh, with uh Vicky and this someone here, uh, you guys did a general review of the, of the tentative budget. Granted, that was under what we would kind of imagine to be normal times and things have changed. So at the time we did, uh, we authorized to put the, uh, public display, we announced that there was going to be a public hearing. Uh, July 1st, that's when your fiscal year starts. So the 21 budget was on public display for the 30 days. So today, August 3rd, uh, we're going to show the changes from the tentative to the final budget, which is our public hearing. And then a week from today, August 10th, uh, there will be a vote to see about uh making sure that that's going to be established. So here are some of the highlights, and I would probably say low, lowlights as well due to COVID-19. Uh, for, for example, student and staff support. Uh, I would love to say that it was strictly spent uh on more educational ideas. I know that uh Mrs. McAbby has come up with a ton of wonderful thoughts, the same with Dr. Ossle, but uh, we had to use a lot of more money for supplies, uh, safe environments, cleaning up touchless stations to wash, to wash hands. Just for any, any sort of things to make sure that the, the kids, staff members were safe. Remote learning adjustments, that was more technology related. So we'd have to do items such as uh software that kids have access to at home. Touchpads, um, pads for uh ELC students. And then uh capital improvements, uh, the phase two construction. Just like uh Randy mentioned, we talked about the uh unit ventilators, you talk about rooftop units. These items were going to help for COVID-19 in terms of filtering. Uh, we will do that research, just like uh Janice was mentioning, we'll make sure we can bring something with that. Roof repair, that was essential, boilers and asphalt. Now, um, the other changes here, if you look at the expenses, uh, again, COVID-19 purchases were related to remote learning and then uh there were minor salary updates that we wanted to make sure were correct. The O N M fund for expenses, um, that was the cleaning and sanitation. And the addition of two vehicles that we were going to purchase from prior fiscal year, but they were late due to COVID-19. Health life safety fund, um, revenues, the school maintenance prevention grant was approximately $50,000 and that was collected in FY '20, so that is no longer revenue in this current fiscal year. And then the expenses is what we've mentioned, the addition of construction phase two. Um, the, the budget assumptions on this link below, um, above here, if you click on it, thank you. We'll show you that, for the most part, a lot of it is flat. Uh, we're not going to change much, especially with revenues. It appears that the economy hasn't done uh as much damage with school districts as what we would have anticipated. So we're hanging in there. We, that, that's why we're saying it's going to be a flat move. Uh, taxes, if you guys uh do recall, when it comes time to uh doing the extension, you do receive at least what the CPI is from December, so that was 2.3%.
Are we expecting though that we're going to have a problem next year with, and with uh revenue for schools, do you think? Because of the disruption in the economy, or do you think it hasn't been as bad as?
You know.
Anticipated.
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you right now, with uh, with taxes, for example, you, it was, I believe it was 2008 and we were on track for a CPI of like 2%. Then the number came out and it was one tenth of a percent. It's so unpredictable. Uh, the state of Illinois that has a different way of doing things and it doesn't make sense. So I, I can't.
Really, no.
No, and CPPRT, for example, that would be the only thing I would, I would worry about. At, at this present time. But even then, you know, the formula is kind of a crap shoot. Interest earnings, this district has been set up pretty well through uh its investment firms, when, from what I've seen from its basis points. So that's actually going to be a lot stronger than most, if not all, districts.
Ron, as you talk with surrounding business managers, what, what are they predicting for CPI for next year? What number are they using?
A lot of, a lot of, a lot of people have actually been using 2%.
Okay.
And uh, that's kind of around, you know, what we're going at. Cause there's, there's no reason to, it's, you know, to say things are dire if we can make things work. But the, here's, here's the scary part, if we talk about the budget in the book here. So, we've already kind of gone on over this executive summary. In fact, I think the, the only page I would really focus right here on in this book, if we kept scrolling down to... Right there, our budget summary. Back when you were presented with the budget, uh, with, when Vicky was discussing this with you, you were looking at an operating surplus of $1.7 million. Then, then COVID hit. As of right now, we're looking at an operating surplus of $492,000. And that is after rigorous discussion, as you guys know, with the S L T, with the alt team, with you guys, to make sure that we do get the best stuff necessary so that school can resume when the time comes.
Yeah, I think Ron, Ron shared some of the impactors, but I think we budgeted over a million dollars of additional funds toward uh COVID-related expenses. Some of them uh still unknown, so that's the major shift in the surplus projection for next year.
You know what? I'm going to celebrate, it's a positive.
Yeah, it's 500,000.
It's five, almost 500,000. I think that's great, you know, it's good that we were able to absorb the expenses because we have to spend it, you know, unless the state comes up with some, you know, additional relief.
Well, and that's, and that's exactly it. There's no, there's nothing in revenue for additional relief that like the, what the federal government's talking about right now too. So if there's more money coming in there.
That's just.
So that just changes, that, that just changed our numbers to the.
Right, the Heroes Act is, is somewhere, I think, between the House and the Senate waiting for action. So I'm not sure what that's going to mean, but in the CARES Act, we received over $1.1 million of additional funding that we utilized last school year.
Are there any risks to the legislature withholding funds for the school not opening? I know some, I know Arizona, I saw something in the Washington Post was.
Well, Illinois is funded very differently than many other states, but they typically, or, or at times will delay payments, but we generally get them. But I have heard and Ron has shared with me that um this year, some of the delays could be longer than usual. But generally, uh, the, the payments have come. There have been some exceptions in past years. I think you were talking about 2008, where there were a couple of times where they skipped payments because they didn't have the money, but that's very rare. So we don't anticipate that as much as delaying of getting our categorical aid.
If, if anything, Cook County is uh, there, if, if a person has not paid uh their taxes as an escrow, is it right now they're looking at a two-month pushback? That people could, you know, make sure that people can try and at least pay for them. But uh, our cash flow is pretty strong, so it, it wouldn't affect us.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure how Arizona funds education, but we fund it largely through uh property taxes where other states do it during income, so they can slash, like Michigan is the same way. They can hold back money, but since it's property, we're guaranteed though. So if the state does hold back money, for us, it's not as significant because we're largely, I think, eighty, almost 80% funded through property. And then we also know that um, I don't know if you or Vicky shared the fact that the majority of people escrow their property tax dollars versus paying it. So those dollars are, are already teed up.
And also the summarize is, I want to make sure that this is noticed, uh, even for the total dollar amounts of revenues versus expenditures. If you notice that, we're looking at $116.8 million in revenues, but look at the expenditure dollar amount. Reason being, the health, life, safety bonds that were taken out in February do have to be spent and they're being spent for a very good purpose. They really are improving the environment of our classrooms, our buildings, and they're there for the reason, like we're seeing with like COVID-19, for example. It, these, these items are, like, these projects are going to be doing something that will live on forever under your watch. So it's something that's, something to be extremely proud of.
Thank you, that's nice to hear.
So, this recommendation uh for these changes on the tentative budget are just that, what we just discussed. If you look at the revenues and expenditures, revenues, for example, there has been no change in the exception of uh the school maintenance prevention grant dollars. So that's where that changes come from. Whereas the expenses, you, you have your two vehicles that buildings and grounds does need. You do have some issues going on right now with COVID-19 that, we know, that's extremely unpredictable, like Dr. Fessler mentioned. And there may or may not be revenues, but I don't like to play it like that. I like to know what we know and let's just at least count on that for now. And we'll figure it out because we're District 59.
Well, and I think another important piece is that, I think when Vicky was building this, she also did not include the potential increase if the progressive income tax is passed in November, which would significantly uh increase dollars to our fund. So that is not included, so we went on the conservative side of that budgeting as well.
Yeah. You've got to be, because you've got to protect.
You have to.
You've got to protect the schools.
Have to.
And if we get gravy, that's great. I sing whatever you want to call it, you know?
I only have one question. So for transportation, um, since we're in flux of the need of transportation, that contract, are there any rebates? Or what, how does that look? Has that been discussed?
I, I'm glad you mentioned that, Chris. Uh, so in the past couple of months, IASBO has mentioned that maybe a, a firm or a good deal would be paying 80% of your contract because it is a contract with transportation. That's something we are working on. I, I don't, you know, I don't think anybody thinks it's fair for us to pay the full amount.
Well, I think that I'd heard that, that the company was at one point laying off drivers. Is that still the case? Or they are, or how are they planning for the start of the school year?
From what I heard that last time, they were not laying them off, but I haven't had the conversation since probably two weeks ago.
Well, we finished the year last year, we were paying the full amount up until, end of, uh, until the beginning of May, because they were paying their drivers through May and then effective May, I think they started letting them.
Yeah.
Go on, go on unemployment, so they, because they could actually make more money with the, you know, the extra money and stuff like that. So I know they gave us a 30% rebate for the month of May or something like that, I believe.
Oh, that, I, I'm not aware of that?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to fantasize that how it works in this year. Because I, I mean, they had to hire drivers with the anticipation that we're starting the year. Now, are they doing the same thing?
Well, we have a contract, so whatever we do, we've got to negotiate, so uh, we'll, we'll follow up on, on that. Especially with this new information that we know that we're not going to be in session um through Oc- through October. So we'll have to go back and, and discuss that piece with them because that, I mean, it's a good Chris, good question, Chris, because that's a significant amount of money.
Uh, other districts, including the one I came from, we made the, the, uh, we made our stuff work. It was a matter of looking at how much money are you, they making in profit versus how much we're going to have to sacrifice for our children in terms of utilizing that money for like e-learning. So that's, that's the big piece. I would make sure of that.
Well, you'll let us know in one of the weekly reports or at the next board meeting.
We'll update you Friday.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
If I can offer a suggestion on that topic, so the PPP database is available, so you can search based on PPP recipients. I would add that into my conversation of negotiating, if there are PPP funds, because that is there to protect workers and still continue revenue flow, so.
What's that?
The Payroll Protection Program that Congress passed in March. There's a database of all, everyone around the country in dollar amounts available of $150,000, so.
Oh, it's still available? Okay.
We would know if our bus company potentially had received any funds, so that it ate in the conversation.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Good point.
Thank you.
Maureen, did you put the education, we're piloting this, what was it called? The-
I station?
The I station. We're piloting it through December, but we're not paying for that. Has that been kind of included in the budget? Would you decide to continue that?
Yeah, we have.
Sorry, Maureen.
So we will need to take action on-
We did, we do have that money put aside. We have a budget for curriculum resources. We had some left over from last year that we have accessible still to use, and then we budgeted for this year. Because with our curriculum committees, we were looking at many resources anyway. The CARES funding earlier did help us with some of those previous purchases. So Ron and I have become best friends. I'm filling him in on what we need, and we're, you know, fitting it into the budget that we have. Really don't anticipate any issues with that.
Hey, Maureen, when is the deadline, or has the deadline passed for submission of how we spent those dollars for CARES?
I believe we submitted, it was about $1 million, and we had already purchased so much. A lot of it was the food, the meals, some of the, and I believe we had almost all of it already submitted to be reimbursed. Is that right, Ron?
So we did submit it already, though? Or we're-
Yeah, because you do it, I think, as you expend it. So I think we've already gotten all of our, or just about all of that money.
Okay, good. Do we have any other questions before we ask for a motion? We need to make a motion on the recommendation for changes to the 2021 tentative budget? Okay, if there's no further questions, could somebody please make the motion on 701(c), please? That artist so nicely-
I can make the motion.
Thank you.
Be resolved on the third day of August 2020, the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 59 approved the following changes to the 2020-21 budget for purposes of adaptation. Said changes to be attached to these minutes as part of the record of deliberation over the same as presented below.
Do we have a second?
Chris got a second.
Chris, Chris got beat you to it, Patty. Chris, seconds.
Oh, that's fine. I don't care.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Okay, Chris, you're in.
Yep. Roll call, please.
Okay. Lang, oh, yeah, Lang.
Absent.
Thank you, myself off mute. I'm absent.
Okay. Mancia?
Aye.
Petrielli? Aye. Reed?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Frinsky?
Aye.
And, Chris, I know I did this before. Chris?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
All right. Thank you, Patricia. All right. And thank you, Ron. So now we have to hold the public hearing for the 2020-2021 budget. Will someone please make a motion to open the hearing? Resolution 1.
I'll make the motion. This is Robert. Motion, wait, do I just read that out as it is, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Motion made by Robert Mancia, seconded by-
Actually, I'll do it. Randy Reed.
Randy, you go second it.
Okay. Seconded by Randy Reed, that Community Consolidated School District 59 Board of Education meeting be opened on this date, August 3rd, 2020, for a public hearing on the proposed budget for the 2021 year, and that the secretary shall record the time as 9:37 PM.
Gotcha.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Petrielli? Aye. Reed?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Frinsky?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Lang is absent? And Mancia?
Aye.
Petrielli? Aye. And the motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. So that's it for the open session of our budget, of our agenda, and now we need a motion to go into closed session.
Schumacher will do it. I move that we go into closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district.
Do we have a second?
Robert will second that.
Okay, great.
Roll call, please.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Frinsky?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Courtney is absent? Mancia?
Aye.